Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting, January 12th meeting of the Town Council. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the only announcements I have are that the town office will be closed on Monday, January 16th, for the observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday. And upcoming Town Council meetings will be Wednesday, January 18th at 6:30 PM, Thursday, January 19th at 6:30 PM, and Wednesday, January 25th, also 6:30 PM, which is a possible snow day, will be budget meetings here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And lastly, Thursday, January 26th, at 7:00 PM, will be a regular meeting.
Paul. My name is the Chair. The Assessing Department soon will soon be mailing out property tax exemption applications to all taxpayers, to the taxpayers. All property tax exemptions are due by April 15. The Friends in Merrimack Public Library will be holding a winter book sale on Saturday, January 21st, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the clump room. Current members of the Friends group are invited to the pre-sale event Friday, January 20th, from 5:15 PM to 6:30. You can also, you can also join at the door. We will not be holding a bag sale during the last hour on Saturday. Watson Park Ice Skating Rink is still claretly closed. The temperatures have not remained consistently cold enough for the ice to freeze. We are asking the public's help. If you see the "Rink Closed" sign, please stay off the ice, and it is not safe enough for use. There is a sign posted at the rink which lists the current status, and the Parks and Rec Department post updates on their websites and Facebook page with current status as well. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding. For questions, please call Parks and Recreation at 603-882-1046. Thank you.
That's it. Tom.
Paul, can the property tax exemptions are being mailed to whom?
Anybody who got an exemption last year.
Okay.
Past exemptions. Best exemptions.
Okay. Sounded like you said to everybody, and I thought that was a little strange.
Everybody who got it last year. Thanks, Tom. All right, next on the agenda, comments from the press and public would like to address the council about agenda items coming up. You can step to the mic here or at the table right in front. Seeing no one, move on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. This evening, we had one resignation, and that was the our Public Works Department Director, Kyle Fox. He wasn't, isn't going to be able to be here this evening, but they actually, Nancy and Paul had snuck him on at a Town Center Committee meeting Friday, noon time, to give him his plaque, and he, I didn't know, did you want to speak about Kyle real quick? And?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kyle Fox, who is the current DPW Director, resigned effective January 6th to move to another community. Kyle was with the town for 17 years. He started as a Highway Operations Manager, moved up to Town Engineer, and then was promoted to Public Works Director. Kyle is responsible for almost every one of our bridges in town being run through the Bridge Aid Program, where we got 80% and 20%, and he was responsible, actually, for the Turkey Hill Road Bridge, that we got 100% federal money at the time. So Kyle made sure all our bridges were intact, and in the 10-year plan, and has saved, he saved the community several thousands, if not millions of dollars, by letting us be in that 80/20 program. Then we only have a couple of bridges left. One is the Route 3 Bridge by Paddingberg that's in the works, that we're gonna not hear about tonight, but part of that project tonight. And then the other one is Chamberlain Bridge, which we're getting some of that repaired with the money that we got for the South Eagan River Trail Project, that Kyle worked very diligently to make sure those were included. So as I told Kyle on that day, he always has a home in Merrimack, and if he needs anything, please let us know, but he will be surely missed.
Did some great projects. Absolutely. We wish him well. Next on the agenda, this evening, we have, excuse me, George May here to present the council with information regarding the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee and the South Eagan River Local Advisory Committee, Committees. There, go, George. Good evening, and George has been on the South Eagan River Lower Advisory Committee for many, many years.
Long time.
Good evening.
Good evening. Make sure your mics off. What do I do? Just push the button.
Push the button. There you go.
How's that?
That's right. That's good, just bring it closer, please.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is George May. I live in Natticook Road in Merrimack, and I am currently a member of the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. And I have been for many years. And the reason I came tonight is that I'm resigning from that committee. It's finally about time, and I just wanted to mention that we need a replacement. And a little bit more than that, let me just tell you that the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee is, needs three members from the town of Merrimack. It meets with three members from each of the four towns in the, in the protected part of the river. That's Bedford and, excuse me, from Merrimack and Nashua on this side, and Litchfield and Hudson on the other side. And essentially, we look at the river pretty much from the Amoskeg Bridge to Tingsborough. And what the committee is charged with is looking at any projects that go, are planned for within a quarter of a mile of the river, in that river corridor, and to make recommendations either to the planters or to DES as to permitting for those, for those projects. The LAC, the Merrimack LAC, has been kind of struggling along, kind of limping along for the last couple of years. And it's, I think, time for Merrimack to kind of put up a couple of people here. And the reason I'm here tonight to mention this is thinking that maybe some of the people pay attention to what's going on in town and might be willing to step up and volunteer. They might come out of the woodwork here. It's not a terrible, terribly difficult job. You take a look at whatever the projects are, the meetings are once a month, they last for a couple of hours, kind of like what we've got here, and maybe do a little scouting on what the projects look like, go out and take a look at the different spots, what's going on, come back and get a little bit more informed when you come to the next meeting. Now, I think it's a good time for the new members to come on. There's some new other members coming on from the other towns. It's the beginning of a new year. It's kind of like COVID is getting over, and this has kind of decimated, I think, all of us. Couple of years ago, we almost did nothing because of what was going on with COVID. So we're kind of getting back up again. It's the beginning of a new year, and here we can get it kind of started all over again. I'm also a member of the South Eagan River Local Advisory Committee. And I wanted to say a word about that also, because it's really pretty much in the same boat as the Merrimack LAC. We need at least one more volunteer there, and probably a couple, because I'd like to back off from that committee to some extent also. And I will still attend meetings, but I contend just as a citizen and go when it really kind of makes sense to go, and not have to drive on a snowy night or something else to New Ipswich or wherever. The South Eagan River, Merrimack's kind of blessed that we've got the two rivers, two designated rivers, the South Eagan and the Merrimack, and they're great resources for the town, and so a little bit more attention has to be looked and paid attention to them. The South Eagan probably has fewer pressures on it than the, than the Merrimack does, but it's a much smaller river, so any little concern that might be, show up on the Merrimack becomes a big concern on the South Eagan. So people to come out and kind of look at the rivers from the standpoint of the rivers. Essentially, it's kind of like, a little bit like a Conservation Commission, but it's a Conservation Commission, not for the town, but for the rivers. We've got the Merrimack Representatives, or Greenville Representatives, or wherever, that look at it from that particular point of view, we're able to bring in information about that, you know, what's going on in their particular towns. There's a third organization. There's the Merrimack LAC, there's the South Eagan LAC, and there's the group that really kind of started it all, the South Eagan Watershed Association. And this is a group just of individual volunteers that are interested in the South Eagan River that've kind of gotten together to do whatever with whatever their individual interests are, but generally mine have been looking at it with education and recreation in mind. But there are other, whatever anybody has for an interest would be good. The South Eagan Watershed Association is the group that's been doing the monitoring that you're probably aware of on the river for the last 25 years. And I will say, although, again, we got a hiatus because of the COVID, and actually completely stopped one year, the first year of the COVID. The monitor, the monitoring will continue. We're going to keep that going. We've got, we've got some new people coming on there and are really willing to help out. There are about 30 volunteers needed here. Now, we already have 30 volunteers, so, but, and we monitor all of the Merrimack through the Merrimack LAC, that is from Manchester, from just above the Amoskeg Dam, all the way down to Tingsborough. And on the Merrimack, on the South Eagan River, we've monitored the entire length, 35 miles from the other side of the border. Mount Attic is kind of the beginning of the river, and it runs 35 miles, comes down and enters the Merrimack, right here in Merrimack, as you know, right here, Watson Park. So although we have, we have about 30 volunteers that do all of the work there, there's always room for more volunteers for this. What's necessary here is that people go out once every two weeks for probably half an hour and take samples from specific spots on the river that they kind of own. And when I say own, it means sometimes, usually, the first time, first couple of times, is picking up the trash that's been left there. A lot of the monitoring sites are bridges, or places where people, kids especially, congregate and leave all their beer cans or whatever. So besides picking them up, we also take all the data, the air temperature, the water temperature, the samples for bacteria, and the samples for dissolved oxygen, and then transport those to a local pickoff point, and then they're transported around the various towns that does the actual sampling, sampling in the labs there. And essentially, what we're looking at here is kind of a general survey of what the river is doing, what the river looks like at that particular random spot, that is Tuesday morning. And the, the two parameters are, is it healthy for people? I guess that's what most of the people really want to know. So that's the bacteria counts. And the second thing that we're looking at, which I think is really the more important, because the other is transitory, is looking at the quality of the river itself. And so we just do a sampling there to give us some general information, is it healthy for the river, is it healthy for the fish, or is it healthy as a river ecosystem? So again, the reason I'm here is it's a new year, it's time for me to move on, and I'd like to get some replacements, I like to keep things going here. I think the rivers are very important. Oh, one other thing. Since I'm here, like everybody else, I think we ought to ask for money, huh? Ask for a few dollars. Generally, this for the monitoring itself. The monitoring, in the, in the past, I've asked each of the towns to contribute $50 toward the costs of, of the monitoring. It's, it, we don't have a lot of costs, but that, that pretty much covers it. It's kind of a voluntary sort of thing. Some towns contribute, and some towns don't. Merrimack generally hasn't. But, and we do this generally through the Conservation Commission, but I'd ask you if you'd be willing to put up $100, that's $50 for the Merrimack, $50 for the South Eagan, to help with the, with the monitorings as, as it continues here. Do I have to answer any questions for you, or?
I'm surprised the Conservation Commission hasn't stepped to the plate, because they have a pile of cash. But I suspect that's something that could be done, speaking for myself. But I, I just suggested that you might be telling us that tonight, and I'm disappointed that you have to go, but you have put in tons and tons of years, and all that effort has been, isn't on our notice. It's, we really appreciate everything there, George. We did, we reached out more recently, not a, I guess, a strong push for some more help, because we had a new person who, before we even had the agenda item, had volunteered to participate, and we couldn't fill a second seat that was available, and now your seat, it sounds like, but, so that's something we'll have to work on again. Nancy?
I just have a couple of clarifying questions for people who might be listening. You mentioned for the Merrimack, it's a monthly meeting for about two hours. Where are the meetings?
Generally, they're at Nashua Town Hall.
Okay.
City Hall.
And about the South Eagan, how often are those meetings?
Once a month.
Okay. And where are they held?
They're in various places. We tried meeting in each of the localities, but the people in New Ipswich don't like to come to Merrimack and vice versa. So generally, we meet in Milford.
Okay.
And it's once a month. Meetings are generally about two hours, and they're pretty informal. Most of the work is done with consensus rather than actual votes.
And who should they contact? Us, or who could they contact for more information, I guess, first of all?
Could I suggest the Town Council?
Manager?
Yeah, the Town Manager. He's got my email and can contact me and?
He's good, Tom.
I can provide information.
Excellent. So anyone who might be interested in one of these three, basically, associations should contact Paul McGally. And I just wanted to make sure that people got a sense of the time requests involved in that. And I want to take the opportunity to thank you for your many years, because I know that you've been involved with the monitoring of the river for a long time, and I just want to thank you for that service that you've provided.
Thank you. Let me add one thing, too. I almost forgot. Both rivers are in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
I think that's what people would like to hear.
Now?
You know, as far as, as far as the rivers go, when we look at the, the quality of the river itself, they're in pretty good shape. The Merrimack, of course, has different problems that we don't monitor for, you know, we, we don't have that capability, but, you know, we don't look at PFOA or any of that stuff. We already know a lot about it. Or the stuffed out of Bees, or, you know, the tar that comes into the river is still floating around 50 years later. But the rivers itself are in, in pretty good shape.
Andy?
I'd just like to give a, want an invitation to George, but if you decide not to go, you're welcome to come to the Conservation Commission. My thoughts are, the folks, there may be some folks out there that watch the Conservation Commission are, are interested in that, and they're not interested in the Town Council.
No.
Come on. So there may be, we may be able to capture a different audience there. If you're, if you don't want to, I'll be happy to carry your message, but if you do, yeah, we'll reach out and see if we can get you on the agenda for the Conservation Commission, and we may be able to reach some different people there.
Be glad. Thanks, Andy. Great point. All right, and the other, there's a couple of PowerPoint presentations in our packet, those are just for our edification, just to learn more about it. I don't know if you put those in, or if maybe the town, maybe the town just did that, maybe Paul's? Thank you. Okay. So, okay, that's, we have a lot of information here that is all about the two different river committees. So, all right. George, thank you so very much. We absolutely appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Happy New Year. All righty. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. Councils to hold a public hearing relative to the proposed safety and capacity improvements for the US 3 Wire Road intersection and corresponding corridor improvements. What's that? Sorry. Oh, no, thank you. I thought about that when George was speaking. Barbara Haley's been excused this evening, and she won't be joining us. Thanks, Nancy. So all our engineers are here, and you'd like to start this off?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're coming back to hold a public hearing to get some public input for proposed improvements to the Wire Road GW Highway intersection. We do have our town engineers back who are doing the project, and they have prepared a short presentation for the public and the council to recap what we talked about in case people weren't, the last meeting that we were at, if they didn't see it, so. They're here tonight, Jim. You ready, Jim? All right, Jim's ready, so we can go.
Mr. McGally, thank you, Board, or Council, I should say. My name is Jim Bouchard. I'm a project manager with Quantum Construction Consultants, and joining us tonight is, from my firm, Quantum Construction Consultants, Anna Geraldi, and also? Is not on. Let's try that. There we go. All right, again, I will recap. My name is Jim Bouchard. I am a project, senior project manager with Quantum Construction Consultants, and the team that is going to be here tonight before you is Quantum and Beta. Beta Group, Beta Group is a subconsultant to Quantum. They are doing the heavy lifting for the corridor study and the development of the conceptual plans. So from that firm, there is John Byatt, Chris Turgeon, and Dennis Flynn will be here to speak to that, various aspects of that. From my firm, Quantum Construction Consultants, is Anna Geraldi, she's our Vice President. And so we pretend to go forward, we will try to pretend to go forward. Let me see if I can get this to work. I have computers, and I don't work well. Hey, look at that. Somehow we can zoom up to, make it full, I guess. Full page. Oh, that didn't do it. All right. Well, I apologize. Does anybody know how to go to full page? All right. Yeah, I was just wondering about that. Can you go look? Obviously not technically. There, thank you very much. Okay, as I get, not a technical wizard, so. Yeah, let me scroll down a little bit. Public presentation, going down to the next page, and as I said, there's two firms. There's Quantum, and there's Beta. Quantum is taking the lead on this, because this was brought in, we are the bridge engineers for the US Route 3 Bridge, and to facilitate the design of the safety improvements, it was brought in under our project that's already currently running, so, but Beta is the specialist in this. As you can see, they're a New England-based company specializing in transportation and engineering, and the experience in everything that we're there, that we have been talking about tonight. I don't know why I'm going through this, but anyway. The project funding for this, how did this come about? The town, working through the National Regional Planning Commission, put in, put the project before the National Regional Planning Commission. National Regional Planning Commission has funding that comes through the DOT for projects that they deem worthy, that should be moved forward, and this project was a, deemed by Nashua Regional Planning Commission to be moving forward. Once they have authorized it to move forward, DOT then becomes the interaction and the final approval of this. But this project has started with the National Regional Planning Commission, did not start originally at DOT, but DOT is, is the administrator for this. It is a project funded 80% by Federal Highway DOT and 20% by the town of Merrimack. As I mentioned before, this was originally programmed for 2027, and the town in there in, through Kyle Fox, who put this, and did the thought process and everything, and worked with the DOT, is, why finish the bridge project only to turn around and start digging up the roadways for safety improvements and realignments and sidewalks? Let's bring it all together, so the, the users of the roadway, the abutters, everybody in town, would not be severely impacted twice for two projects that could be accomplished at the same time. And so that's how this has been programmed to move forward, if I may. So let me see what we have here, and, okay. Under the DOT process, we have to follow their management, okay? Starts with the municipal request to the Regional Planning Commission, as I originally talked about. NRPC ranks the project, this was ranked high in regional need. It was put into the DOT's 10-year plan for consideration and approval by, eventually by the governor. Funding was approved, and at that point, the town has been, was notified of the funding approval and the, the need for selection of a design need for selection of a design consulting firm. That is done through a QBS process, quality-based selection. Once that is done and the consultant has been approved by DOT, the town can enter into contract and we commence the engineering study. And in big blue, that is where we are. We are studying the corridor. We are, and actually, we, but I'm saying more often, it's Beta that's studying the corridor. They're the ones that are identifying the issues at hand. They're identifying some conceptual alternatives for improvements for the corridor and, and the associated costs thereof. Quantum participates, QCC participates in this aspect as we all have ongoing permitting needs for the bridge. So we continue to do, expand our permitting to include the roadway. We are dealing with a permitting agency, so that's our participation throughout this process. Following the engineering study, the completion of it, the project would then move into what is preliminary plans, then onto final plans. And then essentially, what we would be looking is going into, once all the plans have been approved by the town and by DOT, we move into a bid phase. And through the bid phase, a selection of a contractor. And then also, under the state's guidelines, the design engineers, and that being Beta and Quantum, are not eligible to become the construction services consultant for, due to conflict of interest reasons that DOT wants. So there'll be, the town would then reach out and solicit and hire a construction services consultant. And then the construction phase starts in along with this. Now, as this is being wrapped into one big project, we're still working through some of those hurdles with the DOT as to separation of, of the projects, but it's going to be in the, the, the bridge project as we go forward. Just to give you a quick overview of this, it is a safety improvement project. It is also, and what does safety, safety includes the intersection of Wire Road. That's the foremost. That's what was driving this project, the Wire Road intersection. But additionally to that, from Babusak Lake north through Wire Road intersection, pedestrian connectivity is severely broken up. There's some limited sidewalks on the west side of the roadway. There's none on the east side of the roadway. And as everybody is fully aware, or maybe fully aware, the schools tend to, school children tend to come down Woodbury, walk up the sidewalks to Babusak, and then continue on up to Twinbridge Park, the Merrimack Youth Acts Association. And from north from there, there's not a good, safe route for them to get there. So sidewalks were incorporated into, into this project to evaluate how they could be incorporated into the project and as we, and, and constructed also. As part of this whole thing, as I'm talking about this, there is signals at Front Street, Babusak Lake, CVS driveway, and all down through there. If signals were to be provided at, at Wire Road as one of the options, then the town would have the capability of having the signals interconnected for, so they could work with the traffic flows on Merrimack to have a smooth and continuous uniform flow through the, through the corridor. What that does is actually tends to help expedient, make traffic move faster. Sorry about that. So, and Beta will be speaking to that in a little bit, in a little bit down the road. So as I scroll down again, Wire Road intersection. At this point, this is where Beta comes on board. And if you don't mind, I'd like to now turn this over to Chris Turgeon from Beta, and he can continue the presentation and discussion.
And you're joined, Dennis. Please.
Yes.
Yep.
Good evening, council. I'm Chris Turgeon from Beta Group. This is Dennis Flynn also from Beta Group.
Good evening.
So one of the first parts of the engineering study is we meet with the town for a scoping session where we establish a project purpose and need, almost like a project intent, and kind of driving the project development. In this case, the purpose of the project is to improve safety and traffic operations within the corridor limits. And the need for the project is to address safety and traffic concerns identified by the community by implementing safety improvements along the corridor and providing more efficient intersection improvements to flow of traffic along Route 3 within, within the project limits. In addition, pedestrian connectivity and access management are ongoing needs for the community. Excuse me. As we go through the development process of the project, we have to keep in mind that we have to follow certain guidelines and requirements. And some of those include NHDOT Highway Design Manual, the standard specifications for road and bridges, the manual on uniform traffic control devices, ASHTO's geometric design for highways and streets, and we have to comply with ADA as we're going through the design process. One of the first parts of the engineering study is we look at existing conditions and potential issues going along the corridor. The project corridor is approximately 1,300 linear feet, the construction portion of the corridor. The right of way is approximately 66 feet wide and widens at the Wire Road intersection to slightly larger. Currently, the lane configuration is two to 13-foot travel lanes, north, south direction, and two on Route 3, and two six-foot shoulders. And then a 10 to 11-foot turn lane on, northbound onto Wire Road. Some of the issues with this corridor self that we've identified is that there's limited sight lines and visibility coming from Wire Road, making the turns left or right. Additionally, there's, as Jim had mentioned, there's no sidewalks in the eastern portion of the, of Route 3. And on the western portion, there's sidewalks, excuse me, from, on the, from the library from Babusak Lake Road to, to approximately Church Street. So there's limited pedestrian connectivity. There is currently, there is a crossing across Route 3 to the MWA driveway right now, but there's no sidewalks that connect to it. Currently, Church Street, the entrance to Church Street intersects Route 3 at a 15% grade. And that, that doesn't allow for a accessible pedestrian crossing requirement, ADA requirement is a maximum of 2%. So we'll get into what we're proposing for Church Street at, in the roadway alternatives. Additionally, there are existing utilities, including overhead wire, water main gas line, closed drainage systems, and telecommunications fiber optic underneath Route 3. So that's kind of a summary of some of the issues we identified. And I don't know if I mentioned, but there is excessive speed on, through the intersection of Wire Road. We've, we've observed that as well, too. And I think next, I'm going to have Dennis talk a little bit about some of the existing traffic, the equipment that we've inventoried, and some of the analysis.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everyone again. So as, part of the engineering study is part of, part of sort of the evaluation of the existing conditions and the assessment is we, we also take a look at the, the area, the environment adjacent, immediately adjacent to the project intersections. And, you know, we look both upstream and downstream of the intersection, identify, you know, the specifics of the, the area. And as Jim mentioned to you earlier, the three signalized intersections were, were noted and identified. The, excuse me, went to the north at Front Street, right here at Babusak, and then to the south at CVS. And the primary reason for, for doing this is as we are going through the evaluation and the assessment of the proposed conditions, we, we need to know or understand what the alternatives or recommended improvements, what impact they would have on, on the existing environment. And so as part of that, like I mentioned, we, we went out to those, or we've mentioned, we went out to those intersections. We inventoried them. We took a look at the equipment, assessed the, and evaluated the operating conditions. We gathered information about the existing equipment, just to see the functionality. Just understand that if, you know, if, if, you know, if we make a recommendation, or what recommendation I should say we make, how that may have an impact or what, what modifications we may need to make, such as adjustment to signal timings or phasings and things of that sort. So we gather that information so we have a full, comprehensive understanding of the functionality of, of, you know, the entire, entirety of the corridor. So continuing along, so the next, thank you, Chris. In the, in the study here is, is the traffic count data collection. So certainly, we need to understand what we have in terms of actual use, the roadway motor vehicle demand along the corridor. So consistent with typical practice and industry standards, we collected turning movement counts at those four locations, obviously Wire Road and the three others I just mentioned. Just understand how the vehicles, both, you know, the volume of vehicles maneuvering through each intersection and how, how they are doing it. And what that data collection analysis revealed to us was that the, the peak periods or peak hours that we see there through, throughout the corridor are pretty conventional or pretty consistent with what you would typically see and corresponds pretty closely with, you know, commuter peak time periods. In the morning, 7:15 to 8:15, you know, that's, that's pretty standard. And again, and similarly in the, in the PM, you know, 5 to 6. That's, that's typically most areas that have, you know, most of their traffic associated with commuter activity. That's when, that's when you would see your highest peak periods. And then we also gathered Saturday, and, and that also is very, very consistent with what you would, would expect to see for the highest individual hour on a Saturday. And, you know, the reason we do this is we evaluate traffic impacts, traffic operations based on a single hour. That's, that's, that's just been the industry standard for how we do that. And the reason behind that is it's essentially, if you want to think about sort of a stress test, if, you know, we design and assess and evaluate and feel comfortable with the way a facility or an intersection operates during the highest motor vehicle demand period, then it's reasonable to, to assume that any time period that does not see that traffic demand would, you know, operations would, would be appropriate. So why don't we keep scrolling? Thank you, Chris. The second part here, the safety analysis. So we, we gathered some information as part of this through the police department. They, they shared this with us to really get a sense of the, the crash history, you know, in this area, specifically at, at Wire Road as it mentions there. And what we typically do is, you know, you have to look at historic information. And you don't want to go too far back in time because things have maybe a little bit different. There's some changes in the dynamic and the maybe socioeconomic makeup of, of the area. And you don't also want to constrain it to be too tight. So typically, it'd be three in five years is, is pretty standard and, and generally gives you a pretty good sense of what the safety history of a particular area. So you can see there up on this, I assume you have this screen in front of you. Yes, up on the screen, January 2017 through July of last year. And that revealed a total of 11 crashes. Most of those, not surprisingly, are rear end crashes. Rear end crashes just tend to be the most common crash in, in a lot of areas. There was one that we identified that did involve a bicyclist. Our understanding and the information provided to us about that one was that the, the motorist was, was traveling and, and the bicyclist unexpectedly came out onto the road. So it wasn't necessarily, you know, a condition where there was, was, you know, expected conflict between a vehicle and a bicyclist. There was some contribution to weather. That's, that's not too uncommon, particularly in this area. And no injuries were reported for any of these crashes. The severity was really just property damage only. Again, accidents are, nobody wants them, but in terms of understanding the safety profile of an area, if the severity of an accident or if the crash type is really just property damage, and we've all been through them, they're a pain. But if that is the case, it's an indication that, you know, safety is not a pressing or a large concern in a particular area. The severity is really what would, you know, take you to that level where, you know, it would be considered much more problematic. So I think that's, thank you, Chris. Scrolling along. So the next step in this, in the, in the engineering study is we took a look at the, the study area intersection operations, the capacity within, the capacity of each intersection. The way we do that is we perform what's called a, a level of service analysis, which is really just like a qualitative assessment, measuring the effectiveness of an intersection. And it's based on delay, the calculated delay of a specific intersection. And that is measured, the level services is, is based on whether, through an A, through an F. It's sort of, some people kind of refer to it as maybe the report card, if you will, of, of an intersection. And with level service A representing a, a, a low delay or very free flow condition, all the way to level service F, which would generally represent a failed or forced flow, jammed, you know, jammed up type condition. I should note that typically, level service E, I know report cards don't have E, but in our case, we have E. That, that generally represents a condition that's considered at capacity, that you really can't take on any more traffic or, you know, the, the facility is, is strained as it can get without really being completely forced or jammed up. So what we've shown here is just some of the takeaways from that analysis. And Babusak Lake, what we notice is there, you know, the Saturday peak hours, a level service D, that typically represents, you know, you're approaching an unstable flow condition in that case. It's still acceptable. A lot of intersections operate around that level, particularly during the peak period. So still considered acceptable, but you know, you're getting close. Any, you know, significantly more traffic, you'd probably be in that unstable condition. And really, every other intersection in the, in the study area was at level service C. And we regard that as an acceptable operation or stable conditions. Should note, there at the bottom, the Merrimack Youth Association driveway during that Saturday peak hour was that level service E condition, so at that capacity. And, you know, in that particular case, it wouldn't necessarily be surprising that during a situation where there was an event or something going on at the youth association that coincided with the Saturday peak hour, you could see a, you know, the, the demand on the roadway, trying to find an acceptable gap in traffic coming out of the driveway could lead to some, some high delays, you know, trying to exit. So let's just keep it moving along. Thank you. So the next, next step here is what we call the traffic signal warrant evaluation or, or analysis. And, and this is basically, you know, the reason we do this is if one of the recommendations or if the recommendation alternatives includes installing a, a traffic control signal, we need to determine whether or not that is actually warranted. So how we do that is we use what's called the manual on uniform traffic control devices or the MUTCD, which consists of nine warrants that you evaluate, you utilize to evaluate an intersection to see if traffic signal installation is, is justified. So most of the warrants that are in there are based on motor vehicle volume demand, which is not really too surprising to think about. It's like, what is the driving factor, force that really would, 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 would basically put you in a, excuse me, in a situation where installing a traffic signal is, is justified? So it's really kind of based on the, the overall motor vehicle demand and the conflict of vehicles on, on the main street versus, versus the side street. So our evaluation, we evaluated three of the nine warrants, which we thought were pertinent or appropriate for, for, for this project. And they were, was called the eight-hour warrant, so eight hours of continuous traffic. And what that basically means is that you have a, a volume of traffic over an eight-hour period that's above a certain threshold that would indicate that traffic signalization is, is appropriate or justified. And then we also looked at a four-hour warrant, so similar to the eight-hour warrant, just over four hours. But in that case, the motor vehicle demand would have to be a little bit higher because it's for a shorter period of time. And then the last one we took a look at was the peak hour warrant. That's really just based on, on one hour. Typically, you know, the peak hour warrant is, is certainly one to consider, but one from the traffic engineering perspective, the eight-hour and the four-hour one, we tend to look for those to be justified, or excuse me, to be satisfied, to really point us in the direction that warrant, you know, traffic signalization is justified. So the evaluation revealed that all three warrants were satisfied. So basically, the conclusion there is moving forward traffic signalization, signalization, or at least evaluating the implementation of a traffic control signal is definitely justified at this location. Okay. Next. Okay. So Chris, yes, I'll let you.
Yes.
Walk through this.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis.
Before you go on, traffic warrants.
Yes.
What was I going to ask about? You said all three warrants were evaluated, but were they at the Wire Road intersection?
Yes. Sorry if I didn't mention that. Yeah, it was at the Wire Road and yes, the Daniel Webster Highway.
So how did, how does the, the level of service, what was the third one that you said? You had the, the peak hour, I guess?
The peak hour warrant is, is, is the other one.
And there was a, what's the warrant requirement for a peak hour?
So the, the volume specifically?
Whatever. I mean, I just, you, you said that was a worst case of level D or something. I'm trying to remember back to what you.
So, right. Those, the, this specific intersection based on the level service analysis, and I should, I should have noted in, that that was based on the, you know, the existing traffic volumes that, that were counted, was, was at level of service C.
C.
Right.
And that meets the warrants at level C?
It can, yeah. Yeah. So basically, the way the analysis works for an unsignalized location is it essentially assumes that the main road here, in this case, Daniel Webster Highway, is a free flow condition. It's uninterrupted, it has no conflict. So what we have is just really evaluating the Wire Road approach to that intersection and its ability to find an acceptable gap or what is the measured delay for the Wire Road traffic trying to enter, trying to enter Daniel Webster Highway. So I should point out. So I should point out, um, the, the volume of traffic that is exiting Wire Road, a high percentage of, very high percentage of that is right turns. So that is not, that is not a very, uh, that's not the most conflicting movement. Obviously a left turn is. So if we had a higher percentage of left turns, I would expect that that level service would be worse, probably a D, possibly an E. But with the evaluation for warrants, the criteria set forth is really just based on the, the volume that is approaching an intersection. So you look at the overall composition and total volume entering an intersection. And then with the MUTCD cell tells you is if you meet those thresholds or you meet that minimum level, based on the criteria, like I said, set forth in this, this document, it satisfies or justifies the warrants. And then it's a, then it's turned back over to us, the engineers to take that information and move forward with the recommendation.
Okay. But it's more a matter of volume than, than level of service?
Exactly. Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a very good question. And I appreciate you asking it. And, you know, it is, it is also ma-, it is, I should mention that satisfaction of the warrants in, in, by itself is, is not justification. You know, the MUTC will tell you that just because you meet warrants, it doesn't mean, end the story, put in the signal, walk away. Other things need to be considered. And that's what we've done here. We've evaluated other alternatives. Because, you know, you, you don't want to just indiscriminately be putting traffic signals everywhere because there's other, other things to consider.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next, after the traffic analysis, um, I'm going to get into our roadway design, um, alternatives analysis. So for our first, uh, well, the first, um, option is basically to do nothing. It's a no build. And this is not really in the spirit of our, uh, project purpose and need. Um, it does not provide any traffic or safety improvements. And it does not provide for any pedestrian connectivity, um, or access management. It doesn't do anything. So, um, moving on from that alternative, um, the first one is a realigned stop control intersection at Wire Road and, uh, US Route 3. A couple of, uh, a few of the components of this, uh, this option, um, is that, um, Wire Road is realigned to, uh, more of a 90 degree angle, uh, for improved, uh, sightlines. This exclusive left and right turn lanes are not really required. Um, US Route 3, um, uh, northbound left turn lane onto Wire Road will be extended to accommodate the, um, current and future queue lengths. There is no new, um, MYA access, um, um, entry or exit. It's going to remain as is, um, as a, um, full access entrance and egress. I will note that we are proposing to re-striping the crossing there, um, and adding, um, a pair of rapid, uh, rectangular, rectangular rapid flashing beakings that are push button activated for additional safety, uh, for people who want to cross at that intersection. Proposing sidewalks on both sides to have, uh, basically a, a full connection, um, basically starting from Babusik Lake, um, in the, in the library, all the way through north to, um, connect to the bridge project. And another aspect is that we're proposing the closure of the Church Street entrance at Route 3. You know, the Babusik Lake entrance will remain open. Um, this was just, um, to provide a more accessible and ADA compliant, uh, connection for the sidewalks. And, uh, total construction cost for, uh, this option is $890,000. Um, that's including, um, that's project costs. It's included in the appendix for the project and includes, um, um, construction admin and potential, uh, um, right of way impacts, um, temporary easements and needed for slope easements. And, um, here's kind of an outline. Um, you can see the realignment of Wire Road. Um, you can see a painted median to allow for truck turns. Pedestrian crossing. It's just stop control. No, no, um, no, um, no signals. Uh, we have a stormwater, um, management basin. Um, you can see the lane configurations and what's not shown is the left turn onto the southbound left turn on, into the MYA driveway, uh, left turn pocket. It's, uh, shown the less, it's on the left part of the screen, but it's not shown on this image. So that is alternative one. Um, the next one is option two is the roundabout. Um, so we, we, uh, analyzed a roundabout option and it comes out to be more of a hybrid roundabout. Where two lanes, um, on the US 3 northbound approach, a single lane on the southbound approach, and then a single lane on the Wire Road approach. And one of the lanes on the northbound approach is a slip through movement to turn left onto Wire Road. It's a fairly large roundabout. It's a 157 foot diameter curb to curb. And because of that, it will require significant impact to butters, um, and, and the abutting properties, including the MYA. And there's the MYA, MYA, MYA access and egress is proposed to remain the same. Pedestrian sidewalks around the roundabout, all the way, same as the last option. And, uh, similarly, uh, closing, uh, Church Street, um, because of the ADA compliance, at least that entrance on, on Route 3. And, uh, major, uh, relocation of utilities is required, including air utilities, gas and water in order to accommodate, um, the roundabout. And, uh, construction costs and project costs is, uh, about 1.6 million for this, for this option. And here is a kind of a, is a diagram, uh, plan showing, um, um, the roundabout. And you can see on the western part of, uh, the roundabout, the impacts of the properties, um, the impacts of the MYA down here where my cursor is. Requires relocation of a driveway. Um, so there's a significant impacts as a result of, uh, as a result of this option. Option three is the signalized option, um, which is, is our recommended alternative. Um, it is similar to the realignment of Wire Road on option one. Um, it does include a new MYA access, um, and exit, um, at the intersect, at this intersection. It's, uh, we're calling for relocation of, of the, um, of the MYA, um, uh, entrance, uh, to make a more of a four-way intersection. This will include a, a new traffic signal for pedestrian and traffic movements. We're also proposing, uh, signal coordination with, uh, CVS driveway, Babusik Lake, uh, this proposed intersection and, um, um, and with Front Street. The existing MYA entrance is not to be closed. It's just to be, um, reconfigured to be a right in, right out, um, access. Again, we're going to propose, um, uh, sidewalks on both sides of the road of Route 3 and, um, upwards on, um, Wire Road slightly. And, um, as a result, similarly to the, um, first option, there's metal impacts to abutters. There's some sidewalk slope easements and construction easements, but they're, uh, minor in nature. Also closing like the other three options, uh, for Church Street for ADA compliance. And this construction cost is about 1.4 million dollars. So here we have a little bit of a colored plan for, um, the entire corridor. And, um, I'll just, purple represents, it's kind of hard to see, but purple represents, uh, reconstructed sidewalk. Yellow represents, uh, roadway milling and overlay slash construction work. Uh, green is, is slope, um, and landscape work. And, uh, yellow and, yellow and, uh, orange colorish is just new driveway apron, um, proposed driveway aprons. So that's the, and then you can kind of see on the right-hand side down here, there's the traffic signal equipment and pedestrian crossings. All, all signal controlled, push buttons and, um, ADA compliant. Oh, yes. The next one actually looks at a little bit. There we go. There we go. So yes, this is more closer, um, image showing some of the traffic signal equipment layout.
So before, just quickly, Chris, before you move on from that one, I believe you did kind of mention, but one thing just kind of highlight here that the, the, the inclusion of the MYA driveway is, is more of an opportunity for this option. You know, not necessarily the reason for proposing the signal, um, but with the signal in there, that allows you the opportunity to bring that driveway in where the other two options really wasn't appropriate to do so.
So I'm hoping you can expand on that. Why couldn't you put in the MYA access in, in option one? Why wouldn't you?
We, the, the reason it, when we're talking about, well, you think about the, the safety of the vehicular movements. Um, if you had the driveway in there and say a vehicle was, was destined to, to Wire Road, uh, so in this case now we're introducing a conflict point that wasn't there under, under, under the current conditions. Uh, whereas really when you look at and say that's, that's, that's the destination, that's the direction they want to go, or if they want to make a left. Um, in, in reality, I think that the better approach to do that, the safer approach is just to use the existing driveway. And if you were going to go to Wire Road, you would just take a right and then a left as opposed to going all the way across, uh, from, from the driveway if not signalized. And then I think really it was just a space constraint for, for the roundabout. I think maybe physi-, you know, feasibly.
Well, I can understand not putting it on the roundabout.
Right, right.
But, uh, I, I just seems like you could do this without the intersect, without the signalization. And, and maybe you're concerned about pedestrians trying to cross without the, the.
That, that is, that's absolutely right.
But on the other hand, it would give them a crosswalk that they don't have today kind of thing.
At the intersection.
At the intersection.
Yeah. If you think about it, um, if you introduce that driveway in option one, um, you're, like Dennis said, you're introducing a conflict point. People going to Wire Road straight across would be going through opposing lines of traffic, getting T-boned in both directions where they're, as opposed to they weren't doing it before.
Okay. Maybe that's worse than just trying to come out of the MYA driveway. I'm not sure, but.
Well, if you're coming out right, then you get your dedicated left turn lane after the fact. You're not, you're not, you have one less conflict point, basically.
Can we go back to the drawing? Just, is there, is there a reason we didn't include a southbound left-hand turn lane? Uh, and the reason I ask that is I think everybody's major concern is through traffic on Route 3. And if we move the driveway to this, the MYA driveway to this intersection, and we now have a vehicle coming southbound that's going to make a left-hand turn lane, even during a green light, it's going to back up traffic.
Yeah, it will.
Well, I think the, the main reason for it was just simply, uh, space constraints with the upstream bridge.
Be closer in the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you. Uh, I, I believe the, the main reason, yeah, that's much better. Uh, the main reason for that is, is simply the, the space constraints with trying to put in a, a proper width left turn lane, uh, that close to, to, to the bridge. It would impact, um, it would impact the bridge, bridge project, the bridge construction. Is that right?
Yes. And, uh, the, the left turns are, are minimal as well.
They are. That is correct.
So, um, in adding a left turn lane and then, um, tapering back to that one, one single lane. If you added a left turn lane and, uh, the through about, the through north lane would have to expand out eastward to accommodate that. And to come back to, and without impacting the bridge product, project, it's just not feasible. That project is very far along the way. So that would require widening of the bridge, um, because basically essentially you're adding another lane to, to that intersection. So besides space constraints, um, the left turns onto MYA are just, are, are not that much.
Right. That, we certainly appreciate that concern and, and that question. And we do have, um, we do have some additional information in this, in this presentation to, to help address that. And, and, and what we saw, you know, the, the reasons we would necessarily be concerned about, you know, we understand that, yes, they're going to be, you know, blocking now the traffic behind it. Uh, but, you know, based on our evaluation, uh, of the signalized control, uh, we felt, you know, like Chris said, a very, you know, the low volume of those left turns, we did not, you know, did not reveal that that would be an operational concern.
Is, is there a minimal length that that left turn lane would have to be? Or could it, could it be kept a little shorter in order to avoid interfering with the bridge?
It typically, we would like to do, um, 40 feet or so, maybe 50 feet a minimum. But then you have a certain taper length to come back to one lane, um, that's required, um, in the MUTCD. And that distance is just, it's, I can't, I don't have it off the top of my head, but that distance won't allow us to align the roadway back to where the proposed bridge alignment is, needs to be for the approach, the approach slabs and the way it's been designed now.
Even if you reduce that, would you say 40 feet?
Yes.
Even if you reduce that, there's still.
I couldn't get to that. Okay. Yeah. Unfortunately.
We, we did. Yeah. It is a good point. And we did get to look at. Now, one, one thing to note, and it is something that i- isn't really captured in any sort of analysis, uh, capacity analysis that I was talking about before. But if you kind of look at the intersection as it's laid out and you expect, like I said, it's a, it's a pretty low volume making that left. So if you have, uh, in a particular cycle, a vehicle come up, we would expect that they could move into the intersection and allow the cars behind them to get around.
I imagine they're going to do that and then people are going to pull over in the shoulder and pull around them anyway. And it's just, you know, without, without the dedicated space there, they're going to make space by just driving off the edge. So.
So with the, the, also too, with the coordinated system, you get kind of platoons of cars as well. So you do get those gaps in, in, in the, in the traffic flow for people who want to make that left turn.
Right. Cause directly across from them is the opposing direction left turn lane. So it's not a, a lane that they would be in conflict with because those vehicles will be turning in front of them. So it's not like they would be blocking the opposing traffic. So they would be able to see, you know, see the opposing traffic, um, be able to judge a gap. And also we anticipate, um, you know, unless it's, you know, a few left turns, they're all trying to do it, that the vehicles that want to continue through or make a right would be able to clear around them.
So that's okay for one or two cars. But if you get any more than that, you're backing up or going around.
Right. Which, which, again, based on the, the data collection, we wouldn't expect it to be more than one, maybe two in any given cycle. In some cases, I would, there would be many cycles during the hour. There'd be nobody making a left turn.
Absolutely. But during a peak hour for MYA, it would be a bunch of folks.
Which would be.
Do we know those, the current intersections that's signalized, are they, are they currently coordinated?
Continental Boulevard is. That whole Continental X of 11.
I'm talking to Babusik Lake, CBS driveway. Those current signals are they coordinated or they just?
They're just, they have readers. They count, they see cars coming up and know when they're going to adjust lanes to let the next lane of traffic.
But they're not coordinated with the other intersection. So there will be some efficiency gained when we coordinate.
The, the inclusion of a signal here, the, the recommendation would be the, the coordination to create the, you know, some people use the term synchronization of the signals. It's basically they get the controllers of the clocks, uh, synced up and, in, in, uh, for each signal. So they're essentially running as a continuous system, not just as individual signals. And so they are, uh, instead of just operating independently, and we have sort of a situation where just vehicles are kind of Ryan, arriving randomly. Uh, you're essentially establishing a platoon of vehicles is the term, or it's kind of like a mini train of cars that just sort of have a nice progression through the corridor. So you get, maximize the amount of vehicles you can, you can progress through here. So right now, given the spacing between, I'd say, Front Street and, uh, Babusik, it's very far, the two signals. So coordination would not be as reliable or as effective. But now that we introduce one here, now we have, uh, one, an intermittent signal that would now, uh, the coordination would now make sense through, through the entire coordinate. Babusik and CVS currently today, that, that may make sense to coordinate those. I don't know that they are. I don't believe they are. Uh, but as part of this project, we would certainly recommend that those, those signals get, get synced up with one another. Yes.
We, there's very informal, occasional conversation, uh, amongst individuals of the possible future for the MYA facility. So if, um, is there work that could be done in anticipation of a possible change down the road? Meaning if we're not going to do a traffic light and just do the D intersection, would it be, would, would it be an outrageous extra cost to prepare it? If it might not be used, I say it'd be outrageous, but is, uh, for the possibility of signalization in the future? Can we do some work now? So.
Right.
Anticipation.
Right, right. That's, uh, and, and that's not initially an uncommon practice, um, particularly in an area that may have a vacant land that someday may get developed. Or in this case, maybe a change of use. And the recommendation we would certainly make is all the underground infrastructure, the, the underwire conduits, the pull boxes, that those be put in place so you're not digging up the road, um, you know, later. And then really everything above ground, uh, would just have to come in later. There's really no benefit or would not be recommended to put in all the equipment and just let it sit there and, and flip bags on the heads or something for years. Yeah, the underground, that's, that's a, that's a, it's an inappropriate, you know, it's a wise, your money well spent is the way I would term it. Just so you're not coming back later. Now you're digging up the road and putting in these trenches with the conduit for all the underwater, underground. Uh, that is something that is, is, is done. Uh, we've, we've seen that done before. And you just have that in place and it's just a matter of pulling the wires, uh, and you're not, you know, reconstructing the whole roadway or like I said, digging everything up to make that, uh, to facilitate that.
Okay.
Well, one point to add to that to keep in mind, I would just say is right now we're at an 80/20 split. Right. We decided to delay part or, or something and do something in the future. It could be a hundred percent Merrimack cost at that point. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with that thought. Thanks. Uh, did you have further, um, information on your presentation? We did, uh, just a little bit on corridor progression and stuff because we didn't touch on.
Right. So we want that a little bit more detail, get into the, the, the analysis here or, or what, you know, the results of the analysis were revealing. And, um, this is not necessarily a, uh, a pretty picture or anything like that, but it is a, a sort of a snapshot of the Wire Road intersection within our, our, our analysis model. And the reason I, um, and, and what we're looking at here is, is the, the operations of, of the PMP count. The reason I, I. The reason I, I, um, and just showing the P M peak hour, and we certainly have the information for the other two is. Uh, looking at the traffic volume and the operations, that is, uh, for the corridors and P and and specific wire road, it is the most, most critical. Uh, time period, uh, mostly because of the, the northbound left turn onto wire road is 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 pretty significant, about over two hundred vehicles. And an hour doing that movement, so what this is, this is taken from, um, our model and this is the existing conditions. What this is showing us and and is is basically the measured or calculated, uh, queue length or back of queue for for each approach. And I'll kind of walk you through what what each of these little colorful bars, uh, mean, and so, uh, the model is evaluating, uh, sixty minutes worth of of traffic or that peak hour. And so if you look at a, uh, we'll say the, we'll start with the wire road approach, that sort of, uh, bluish or turquoise is is basically. The analysis is telling us the, the average back of queue will will basically be back to there, so really not that far, back to, back to that driveway. Uh, but, uh, the other, the other pieces of information or piece of information the model also gives us is the observed maximum queue, you know, how far back during that hour? Did the, did the queue go? And then there's another metric here that's typically used by traffic engineers called the ninety-fifth percentile queue, and that's just a statistical measure based on the average queue. I don't necessarily want to get into the, the specifics of what that means, but it is a, it is a good metric we use. Along with these others to to sort of assess and evaluate how things are operating and, you know, really when we talk about, you know, we, we have these terms like level service and delay. But really, the, the, the perspective we need to be thinking about is that from the user, uh, the, the person experiencing, uh, the operations through here, the, the everyday traveler. And, you know, they think about things in terms of how far they were backed up from an intersection and how far it took them to get through an area, not necessarily, we don't go out there to somebody and say. How long were you delayed? You know, people just don't think in terms of those contexts. It's a good way to measure for what we do, but in terms of. The, you know, the actual user experience, it's, it's not really valuable, so. Uh, that's why I want to present this here, and so, you know, what this is showing us is, uh, under existing conditions, we have, it may have a queue. Uh, or the model is indicating to us that the, the queue is going back as, as far as you see it there. Uh, and then we also, um, have the other approaches, uh, revealing some information. So the left turn, you, you can see the average queue is about halfway back and then. Not surprisingly, given the demand in in the afternoon, uh, the max queue does extend all the way back to the end of the left turn lane. Uh, and, you know, one thing to point out is, is this, um, this model can be a little bit conservative, and what I mean by that is. Uh, heading south, there really is probably never a queue, right? Because you don't have to stop. And so what the model basically says is that if your vehicle travel speed comes under a certain limit. They, they regard that as, as you being in a queue, so that's why you see, you know, the measurements there, so the average queue is really at the intersection and the max queue is like one or two cars. So that's the only reason you may see something there and, you know, on occasion during that hour, someone will probably be turning right, so that'll slow down a few of the vehicles traveling behind it, so that's why. Uh, the model basically indicated to us that the max queue heading southbound was, you know, a few feet back or, you know, a few cars back. So we wanted to start with the e- existing assessment, just to sort of, you know, set the groundwork for, you know, the evaluation process. So the next one we looked at, if you don't mind scrolling down, Chris, so we, you probably heard that, you know, earlier you heard Chris or even myself maybe referred to the no build condition. And that's not just a not doing anything, but it's also evaluating the traffic, assuming there were no changes. To to the infrastructure, no modifications made to the intersection, but we are also assuming there's been some growth in traffic. That background, you know, things being developed in the region or in the area that are now, uh, contributing to some, some traffic through here, so. Uh, typically, uh, it does sound low, but we, we applied a one percent growth rate over about seven years. Now, one percent seems low, but in terms of traffic growth, that is, is, tends to be a big conservative. Um, I, you know, typically what we've been saying, honestly, right now, it's, it's really hard to get around, you know, our arms around the way things have been going, but. On, on average, historically, I'd be doing a half percent, one percent in an area like this is pretty common, if you look at other studies. Uh, in the area and in in the region, you would, you would tend to see, to see that as as the growth rate, so. Uh, what, you know, may jump out yet at you with this particular location, there really is not going to be much difference in terms of operations or back of queue between. Today and in the future, because we just simply aren't going to be adding all that much more, more traffic, so, you know, if you looked at this and say, well. You know, is this the same screen? You know, it actually is, is a different one, it is measuring, uh, you know, the, the, the traffic or evaluating. Uh, the, the grown traffic, uh, seven percent increase, um. But it's really just, just not a significant enough increase to, to have a measurable, uh, change in the operation. So the last one I'd like to show you then is, this is the intersection with the recommended improvement, so this is actually under. Signalized control, so you notice we have a little bit more color on this one because we've introduced one, the M Y A driveway. But also now we have the traffic signal, so. One thing that does occur, and we, we do need to, um, recognize is that when we have the signal, we will have to stop traffic on Daniel Webster Highway to provide. Uh, the green or the right-of-way for wire and and M Y A. Um, and, you know, we cannot, you know, we, we, we cannot provide that, um. You know, that green or that, that, that unrestricted flow of traffic from wire road without asking, um, the Daniel Webster Highway traffic to stop. So, you know, the takeaway here is that when you look at wire road, this is what the improvements, the operations are pretty consistent with what you see today. And our takeaway, when you look at, you know, we'll start with the southbound approach is, yes, the queue is obviously longer because we are stopping the traffic periodically through that hour. But really what you're seeing is the average queue is only about a little over a hundred feet. So that's about four vehicles and the max queue is about two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet, so not much longer. And, you know, our, our, our evaluation, our assessment of this, it's, it's well within, you know, a reasonable range, it's not having, going to have significant. Uh, impacts, uh, not only on upstream signals, it's not going to queue back into another signalized intersection, another intersection blocking that traffic. It's, it's also going to be contained within, uh, the operations of, of, of this intersection and we, what I mean by that is in the occasions that we do experience the maximum queue. We would expect during the time that southbound, uh, southbound Daniel Webster gets the green, that queue will clear out. So the, the, the traffic really will not have an experience where they are just slowly slogging through an intersection, taking multiple light cycles to get through. Most of the time they will get through, um, like we talked about with that coordination and on the times that they do have to wait, they're not going to have to wait a significant. Uh, significantly long time and unreasonable amount of time and they will clear through when they get the green. Um, so that, you know, and then even, you know, if you look at the southbound, sorry, Chris, almost, we, we, I would say we have a similar experience. You know, left turn lane, the average queue is only a few cars back, the average queue for, uh, the through right is only about, you know, seventy-five feet, feet back. You know, the max queues do come back, but I should point out, that's, that's just the max that it was observed during that sixty-minute period, the average is is much shorter. If we had a situation, you know, one of the, uh, takeaways from this, what I like to look at, if we had a situation where the average and the max were very similar. That would mean throughout the entire sixty-minute period, the queue was extending back all that distance. We don't have that here, so. That also means that during some of these cycles in that, that sixty-minute time period, the queue is less than that blue line or it's closer to the stop bar than that blue line. And so the last thing we wanted to just show you real quickly, um, is this little table here is, you know, I talked about, you know, the user experience and and travel time. And these numbers all look very similar, they're all about two points something and it is basically. Uh, you know, our, uh, part of our evaluation, using that traffic model, we wanted to, you know. Determine what was the overall travel time, you know, through the corridor, starting at Front Street to C V S and vice versa, so northbound. And and southbound, so if you, in, in this case, I included all three peak hours, so if you look at the A M, um. You know, if you're traveling northbound, it's about two minutes, hundred and twenty seconds, southbound, pretty similar. We go to the no build, you saw from that earlier graphic, you know, the, the operations don't really change that much and it's actually consistent along the corridor, because there's not a lot of. Uh, friction and then when we introduced the signal, so yes, we expected to get a little bit higher because we're going to be stopping traffic on Daniel Webster, but it got six seconds higher. So our takeaway from that is the, the increase in travel time with that signal is, is negligible. And, you know, I won't get, you know, break down every single number, you can see it there across the screen, when you look at the difference between the no build, and that's really the comparison you want to do, the no build. To the build, you're really seeing an incremental or very little, you know, very small increase in overall travel time that we think is, you know, basically. Would not be noticeable by typically, you know, motorist or user and and very negligible, so we thought this was, was a good, good piece of, uh, data to include, just, you know, the concern about. Particularly in the southbound direction of left turns into the M Y A and potentially blocking the vehicles behind them. You know, during the course of an hour, it's just really not going to be significant or noticeable. That was it. So I don't know if we have any other. Closeout slides here.
This, we just, next is environmental.
We have to speak with this. We have to bring Jim back. My musical chairs here.
Thank you, guys.
Um, as I mentioned before, uh, the process that we have to do, we have to, uh, do, Quantum's going to be doing the permitting. Um, we've already had some meetings with, uh, various agencies, but this just gives you a quick rundown of the permitting that would be required for the project. Uh, it is within, uh, the shoreline, uh, permit, it is, is in, the project is within the reference area for Babusik. Brook, so any tree taken would have to be, uh, permitted. N H D E S, Department of Environmental Services. Their alteration of terrain permit would be required because we exceed the maximum of, uh, disturbed, uh, uh, their minimum for disturbed, uh, surface area. Um, we have been through, uh, the research, uh, with New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau for the state and U S Fish and Wildlife. There are no endangered or threatened species that will be impacted. We have also, uh, participated in meetings with, uh. The ship-owned, uh, Division of Historical Resources, State Historical Preservation Officer, uh, P I M A, uh, excuse me, Federal Highway. Uh, D O T and, uh, we've actually followed those meetings up with a, a sidewalk that occurred on November twenty-ninth. With representatives of, uh, Division of Historical Resources, uh, D O T, ourselves, uh, Beto and, uh, the town. We walked, uh, the corridor for where the sidewalks were going, uh, at that point, based on the visualization that was. That, uh, D H R and, uh, could see there was no, uh, impacts or any other additional studies that were going to be required to. Uh, properties within that quarter, as you know, the South Heagan Village Historical District is in part of that, uh, comes up into, comes pat, comes north of Babusik Brook. Uh, Babusik Lake intersection in through part, partway through the thirteen-hundred-foot corridor, but they feel be, that there's no impacts. If we were to do anything major, um. Then we would have to go back to them, but right now, everything is, is, they're fine with it as the project is proposed. Uh, National Environmental Policy Act Document, N I P A, this is a summarization, uh, on a federal level. This gets submitted to the D O T, it gets reviewed by, uh, Federal Highway, it gets reviewed by, uh, U S Army Corps, it gets revoked, reviewed by E P A. It goes up through the whole, it basically, it is a summarization of what is, uh, happening to the. But the project is imposing on the cultural and historical and natural landscape, um, you know, in the area. Your summation of what, basically what I just talked about, impacts to cultural resources, impacts to wildlife fauna. Um, and, uh, it is a, uh, a document of probably a couple hundred pages that gets put together and submitted up. And it has to be approved by, um, U W, uh, by Federal Highway before you can move into final design. It is done during the, uh, design process and preliminary design process. Federal Highway requires under that section four for parks, anytime you are proposing impacts to parks, no matter what it is. They want you to evaluate it, section four F is that, what are the, you know, what are the impacts? In this case, if the recommended is going through, it would be showing the new, um, access egress at wire road and, um. Preliminary discussion show that that's not really, it's not going to be, uh, an issue, it's basically becomes what we call a de minimis, it's, there's no, uh, no concerns. Going down through as with any project, we've quickly talked about it right away in easements. The project is designed to stay within the existing right-of-way, as Chris and we originally talked about, there's about sixty-six feet of. Right-of-way out through there until you get to wire road, everything is staying within the existing right-of-way, we're not proposing physical structure outside the, 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 uh, right-of-way. What may happen is, because when you're putting in sidewalks along the existing roadway, we're going to elevate the sidewalks with vertical granite curbing about seven inches, so we're going to have some slopes. That have to taper off from the back of the sidewalks, there will be then easements on back of, on private properties for us to slope back and meet grade. Um, that will be in there. Takings are not proposed as part of the project, um, as we go forward, but what happened is. You know, working with Beta, we will prepare easement plans that will show the limits of the, uh, the impacts. Uh, this will allow the town to discuss those impacts with all the butters along the route. Um, and once, uh, N I P A has been approved by Federal Highway, then the town can seriously begin to talk, uh, with the, um. The landowners who are impacted as to, uh, the fees that may have to be encumbered by the town to pay for, uh, or to. To cover the encumbrances and that will be done during basically the final design process, it cannot happen before that, uh, under, uh, Federal Highway. So that brings us up to where we are, we have a recommended construction cost estimate of one point four million dollars for alternative three. Um, we're, we're bringing the engineering study to, uh, closure, we are required to do the public informational meeting, well, welcome to it, here we are. Thank you very much, and this will all be documented in a conference report within to the engineering study. And that gets, uh, submitted to D O T in, in the engineering study report, that Beta has already prepared a draft of which. Counsel has been, uh, given the draft of it, it will be following, uh, this meeting and, uh, it will be finalized, uh, with. Uh, the sections that we have to provide to Beta from Quantum for all the historical. And we're, this is where it summarizes where we are, uh, preferred alternative is signalized intersection at wire road. Coordination with all the other existing signals along the way, um, the existing signals work on microwave, so that's line of sight, so. Um, the signalization at wire road provides the ability to signalize C V S Babusik all the way up to Front Street by line of sight. Um, we're proposing a new M Y A access egress that allows for existing conditions and any other future conditions that may want to occur at, uh. The, um, the park area, Twin Bridge Park area, M Y A if it's expanded. Uh, sidewalks on both sides of U S Route three, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, um, the athletic fields, uh, the M Y A. There are significant, um. Pedestrian traffic during school times or kids coming down Woodbury Ave, coming up through, getting to the M Y A. They are protected to Babusik Lake, after that, there's a, there's a sidewalk in front of the library and that's at Church Street, they lose the sidewalk and they are walking in what we call shared use. They're walking in the roadway, there's none on the east side at all, um, and that would become a, uh, you know, an issue where we could, as. Uh, Beta's already talked about crossing, go on up through there. Um, it has the smallest footprint of impact for us in terms of environmental and disturbance. And it has the least impact to the area utilities, we are looking, Quantum is working with, uh, area utilities currently. Uh, because, for the bridge, bridge program, uh, and this will get coupled into that, so. Uh, our recommendations are to, you know, to continue moving forward, submit the engineering study, complete the final design and permitting. Um, and you get your reimbursement of engineering costs, uh, at the completion of final design and this would be incorporated into. The bridge project, so start of construction could occur around, uh, twenty twenty-five and at that point, this concludes our presentation. Um, to the council and to the public and we will entertain questions, comments, anything we can do.
Counsel, any further questions? Comments, thoughts? And we're going to open the public here in just a moment. Thank you.
I'd like to wait until after. Can we do that?
Yeah, do you want to open the public hearing now? All right, very good, uh, if you, if the public, uh, it's a public hearing that will be open at eight twenty-six. If you would like to address the council, you could step to this mic here or have a seat where Jim is currently sitting and. And state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's, can you hear me? Is it on?
Just, yeah, it should be on.
My name is, excuse me, Phil Knotts, I live on Wire Road and, uh, I'm a. Graduate civil engineer from Iowa State University, I've lived in town for, well, since nineteen eighty-five. And, uh, I go through that intersection, the wire road and D W Highway all the time and, uh. Set aside the sidewalks, I understand the sidewalks, um. Closure of Church Street, I don't know that that's really necessary, I don't know how many accidents there have been at that intersection, but there's not much traffic that goes down that road, I, I feel. But with regard to the intersection of wire road and D W Highway. The simplest solution from my perspective is to put in a left turn lane, so you're not backing up the traffic of people that want to go southbound. And the, the people in the left turn lane can, can turn when it's clear. Secondly, if you move the driveway from the M Y A to the proposed location north of the facility, across from the intersection. You'll, you eliminate that backup for people going southbound that want to turn left into the M Y A. So to me, that seems like the simplest solution. Uh, because you're trying to solve, to me, if you're really looking to solve the accidents at wire road and D W Highway, you're talking about. Two accidents, two minor accidents on average per year. And some of those are weather related, which this won't address at all, if it's slippery, it's slippery and, uh, people will drive as they drive, but. That's, uh, that's my perspective on it, it seems like a very complicated solution for a, a very simple problem in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody, was anybody else like to? Does anybody, does anybody else like to further speak to this?
I'll sit here, is that okay?
That's perfect.
Yeah.
And my name is Nelson Disco. I'm chairman of the Town Center Committee. And this project fits in with the long-range plans for the Town Center. I especially want to emphasize the importance of the pedestrian throughput in this intersection. I know there's pros and cons and the others, and I'll leave those big decisions to you, but please keep the sidewalks in. The sidewalks are an important part of this. It's one of the reasons we've been pressuring the Public Works and so on to do something that allows people to walk from the library to the post office safely. And that is not the situation right now. So I would urge you to keep the sidewalks in. I know there was a preliminary hearing on this where someone didn't feel sidewalks were important here. That's contrary to all that the council has done over the years and the Town Center Committee has worked on over the years. So it's very important to keep the sidewalks in. And it's important that the Town Council support that. The support of the Town Council to this project is important. It's critical. There's, there's a lot of people who'd like to have this money for other projects around the state. This is state and federal money. And we're at the front of the parade right now. And if they sense, if those people sense that there's some dissatisfaction or some concern about it, they'll be happy to find another, another buyer, if you will. So I thank you for that. I appreciate your consideration of keeping sidewalks in there and helping make this a walkable town. Thank you.
Thanks, Nelson. Is there anybody further who would like to speak to the issue at hand? While this young lady's coming up, Jim, is that, yes? Oh, yes, no, please. I just had a question for Jim as you were approaching. Is it a divided, it showed a divided highway going up to the bridge, the new Babusak Brook crossing?
Pardon?
Showed a divided highway going, on your drawing, going up to the new bridge.
It's not a divided highway. It's going to be a normal two-lane with sidewalks on both sides.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Thea. I am a Merrimack resident since 1993, and my son lives on Wire Road. He is in a butter. So it's not like we're not familiar with that area. I can say that I agree with the other gentleman here that, and this gentleman over here who agrees with the sidewalks, but I do think that even Tom had mentioned that I think we could probably do something with Concept 1 and not have to go through the full extension of that signal. My concern is the backup of traffic on Old Route 3, especially when it happens on Route 3 and how people move over to the old Route 3. And I agree that with this money, there's probably other things that could, can be improved in Merrimack. I just wanted to express my opinion of that. I don't live on Wire Road. I do know that, that intersection could be improved. It is hard for me to pull out of my son's driveway, but I just wanted to speak up for him that, you know, he's a little concerned about how his property is going to change and the signal that's going to be there and how it might even affect even more traffic in that area.
Thank you, Thea. Could you, could you state your full name?
Thea, and the last name is Knust, K-N-U-S-T. And I did, we did send a letter to Paul, and for the record, our concerns are stated.
Thank you. I could, I didn't have that one printed out in front of me. It's number four?
Four.
Yes, I did receive, we, I think we all.
Okay, and then when they talked about the slopes on the driveway, I know that we can talk about that later, but I think overall for the town, there's other things that could be done and probably this project can be solved with, I think it's called a little more overkill, maybe some better ideas. I liked what Tom had said.
Sure. The slope easements that they're speaking to, I know where your, where the street address is. I think those, regardless of those changes, because of the sidewalk, I think those slope easements will, I'm not a hark for such, but I suspect they're going to impact the property.
Yes.
For that purpose, regardless of what option we choose.
I understand.
Okay.
And then, and those, we can talk about once you guys.
Right, and there's a conversation that will occur.
Right, I just wanted to put on the record that I think that we're almost there. I'm not too sure Concept 3 is the right thing yet.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Thea. Anybody else would like to discuss this?
Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Hello, hi Bill, how are you doing?
Good. For the record, my name is Bill Boyd, 139 Jopper Road, representative to the General Court of New Hampshire, representing Hillsborough County, District 12, Town of Merrimack. Mr. Chairman, through you to my former esteemed colleagues of the Town Council. Couple, a couple of points. It is crucial as we move forward with this project, it's probably going to be coinciding with the widening, widening of the FE return pike. And to allude to Mrs. Newt's points regarding the backup of traffic, once that widening commences and once the work that we're doing through town, a lot of that northbound traffic coming southbound, I mean, it's already backing up and creating, you know, creating a queue at Bedford Road. I can only imagine what it's going to create in the future as we proceed forward. So one of the things that I would encourage and I'm happy to facilitate, in my role as a state rep, is working with DOT to make sure that lines of communication remain open between DOT, project engineers and the town so that we're trying to really mitigate some of the problems that may occur, some of the challenges may occur as really it's not just to the proposed project in town, but also the FE effort. So I really think that's a salient point. That's number one. Number two, when I sat on, when I sat on the council, I was very much in favor of the roundabout at Turkey Hill Road. And I think we've all been pleasantly surprised at the, at the relative success that we've had at Turkey Hill Road. Looking at this particular project, I was very enthralled about the prospect of putting a roundabout there now. You know, having a second bite of the apple, looking at it, I agree with the cyclone here. There you go. If there is a way to, to curve Wire Road and align it and narrow that road just enough and shouldn't be, if you can narrow it to create an element of traffic calming, I think it's going to, going to be able to facilitate a more reasonable flow of traffic through that intersection. It's going to allow people that are going to be, I mean, if you're coming down Wire Road and I want to go northbound, we're all going to go down McGaw Bridge Road. I mean, that's just, that's just a fact. You're not going to bang a 180 at the end of Wire Road and go down DW. Just logically, the way that I would approach that, that doesn't make much sense. So if you, if you tee that intersection and align with the MYA properties, you create a nice intersection and it sets up the pedestrian capacity that, I mean, you want people going to MYA, you want people going to Kids Cove. I mean, the neighborhoods of McGaw, McGaw Bridge Road, Berkeley Street, Mallard Point, you know, there's a unique opportunity for them to be able to walk down that road and use, use the crosswalks there to be able to access. So I think for me, a four-way intersection, no signalization, I think that's, I think that's a nightmare waiting to have and to have two signalized intersections within the span of 100 yards of each other. I just, it gives me the heebie-jeebies. I just don't like the thought of that, is my words. And then the one last thing is really to consider some type of, you know, at the pedestrian walkway, some type of traffic calming, whether it be a slight indentation where the crosswalk is, a slight, you know, cut in the road that creates it, just to slow that traffic down enough so that people are aware that there's, that there's a crosswalk there for people that are accessing Kids Cove or MYA. They know that when they come through, and I forgot who the previous individual that spoke was, you know, once you come through that intersection, you do have a proclivity to speed up at that, at that particular part of the road to, as you move northbound towards, towards traffic supplying Dunkin' Donuts. So those are my immediate thoughts on the matter. It's not like we haven't, when I sat there, we haven't talked about this before, so it's some, some unique challenges. I envy you. I think, I think this is a good conversation to have because what we choose to do there, I think is going to create a little bit of vision, not just for the Town Center, but what we also do with the northbound, some of the conversations that we've had regarding, you know, that particular area. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Have a, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
My name is Kate Tyler, and I live behind the post office of McGaw Bridge. And I agree that when there's a problem on Route 3, their traffic goes right through my neighborhood and they do not know the speed limit's 30 or 20 or whatever it is in there. So living back there, I, for 16 years, have been avoiding those left turns on Wire Road. They're a pain in the ass, especially if you have a big vehicle like my pickup truck. I can't see. I can't see to make a right turn without pulling halfway out into the road because that wire and McGaw Bridge are so tight. And if I want to make a left turn, I still have to pull out into the intersection. And if I pull out in the intersection and there's cars coming that I can finally see, I stop traffic coming from the right. And then trying to make a left turn once I get to Daniel Webster is another pain. So I only go that way if I have to go to the dump. Otherwise, I go all the way around to go out the other end of McGaw by Dunkin' Donuts to make my right turn. If I have to make a left turn, that's another story. I have to wait for the lights to change and hopefully there isn't a line of traffic there. So I was wondering if you guys even looked at those left turns from McGaw onto Wire at all? Are you planning on doing anything with them? Because that's really a sharp turn and there's a big hole right there from people who can't see where the pavement ends.
The left turn off Wire onto, onto?
Off of McGaw Bridge.
Off of McGaw Bridge onto Wire.
Okay.
Toward DW. See, right now, you can see to the left, but you can't see what's coming from the right because of the angle.
Because it's a hard turn.
And the rocks and vegetation right there in the corner. And once you, but because I can see to the left, my other thought, when you said you're changing it from that nice curve, a straight angle to a right angle, that's probably going to cut down on our vision even more. We might not be able to see the people at the corner making a right turn onto Wire southbound from 3. Because it's going to cut down the, our vision. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't, I don't sense that that will be a problem. The turn off of McGaw onto Wire Road is not something that's actually part of this, so we haven't looked into that at all.
Okay.
But I take your side there. When it, when it comes into a 90-degree turn onto Route 3, that, that's a, probably a better advantage as far as sight distance and seeing oncoming traffic. I think you'd be better off there. But there's a thought that some, that this, turning this into a 90-degree might make it more advantageous for people instead of going down McGaw Bridge Road to continue out to Route 3 and head north there. I'm not sure how that'll all play out, but that's, that was part of the conversation at our earlier presentation we had a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, another comment I had is, I actually like the idea of a roundabout. I'm retired military and I've stationed over in Europe, and roundabouts are everywhere and I've grown to like them because you're not sitting there waiting and have, not being able to go if no one else is coming from the other direction. So I do like that idea. And with the left turn slip road, I think that might be easier.
In a perfect world, it would be because I like the idea, you know, early on before all the work had been done. But for me, the takings and everything that are involved with that make it a much more difficult situation, right? It's a very tight space for the size of rotary that we would have to do. But I appreciate your thoughts.
Okay, and my last thought is, if you were to do the roundabout option, because I live so close to DW and the turnpike, I hear the emergency vehicles and they're always going very quickly, as fast as they can, through that intersection. If there's a roundabout, wouldn't that slow them down?
Mm-hmm, it tends to slow everybody down in the vicinity.
So those are my comments.
Thank you so much. If anybody would like to continue discussion on this, feel free to step to the mic. Seeing no one, I do have a couple that I want to, I'm going to completely read into the record, but they did send emails that I thought I'd pass on. This is Barb. This is Tom Bomberg, 2 Brant Drive. He's lived off Mallard Point, he says, well, 2 Brant Drives in Mallard Point. He's against the rotary with stoplight. He believes it's not necessary and will create further backups when driving through town during peak hours. He goes on to say, if the option is to make this more of a 90-degree turn, eliminating, eliminating the back, eliminating the looking back onto DW, then a left-hand lane needs to be created to allow drivers turning right to proceed. My opinion, you should not still, wait, okay, I'm sorry, should have read this before I got to that. I, it says, I, my opinion, in my opinion, I suspect you should still not be able to turn left, okay, from Wire to Daniel Webster Highway. And then, okay, and then that's, that's it as far as those. I have one other from Counselor Haley that I'll be reading. She asked me to read that into the record, so I'll do that. I will, if there's nobody else who would like to speak, then I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:45. Any conversation, any further discussion?
I just wanted to bring up another question on, I mean, we talked about this being about safety and efficiency and improvements. And there's not really much of an efficiency improvement as far as through traffic is concerned, based on those last couple of slides that you guys presented, 2 versus 2.1 minutes or something like that to get through there. So I'm trying to understand if we've really increased the safety, as was brought up by one of the gentlemen, if there's two accidents average per year, effectively minor with no injuries, we could still have that even with the signalized intersection, I presume, especially if you take weather into consideration. So I'm trying to understand, what do we, do we think we've really improved anything Sidewalks, I, okay. I mean, that, I don't have any argument with sidewalks. I think that's great, that is, not $1.4 million worth of sidewalks, but.
Counselor, we can have BETA skip to that.
So, okay. I guess one of the safety improvements is that if you have a signal, regardless of efficiency, oh, I'm sorry, regardless of efficiency, having a, having a light that can, will tell you to turn left, turn right, go straight, stop, and push button activated for pedestrians, that's immensely improved versus a non-signalized intersection qualitatively.
So there's pedestrian safety.
Yes.
And potentially some traffic control safety.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Right, yeah, just, I guess kind of tack on that, you just brought it up there, that what we have right now, we don't really have an opportunity or we don't have a situation that you would regard, excuse me, as a safe and efficient facility for non-motorized users and, you know, understanding of the purpose and need as we want to expand upon that. And so putting in those crosswalks across Daniel Webster at Wire Road, that situation, you know, if you were just to put those in and you were not to enhance the traffic control, you would potentially be introducing a less safe condition. You're putting in crosswalks without a, you know, a safe means in which to cross them. There are other options. And then the other thing I point out, it's, you know, it's always a little bit of a debatable topic, but sometimes, you know, we get feedback from our, you know, the folks in the police department or even people who live in areas and they, you know, it's called a, you know, perceived or safety issue or near-miss condition. What we're reporting in terms of crashes or telling you in terms of crashes, just, just what was reported. And there are several areas out there where there is conditions where it's, it's, it's just evasive maneuvers or a split second here or there that prevent the accident from happening. So we're relying really just on people being, you know, sharp and, you know, and really being able to navigate a difficult situation. And, you know, intersections, you know, transportation facilities should really be self-regulating. We can't just continually depend on, you know, everyone just always being, you know, as top as they can at driving. We need to try to minimize on that situation. So that, that gets a little tricky with safety because we do want to point to the data and indicate that that's, that's a pressing, and like you pointed out, we're just not seeing a high number, so what's occurring out there. But there are definitely situations there and the feedback, you know, that, you know, we receive, it's very wide, it's very forgiving, so that can, you know, allow for some, you know, some less safe maneuvering to be mitigated just by the width that's occurring out there. So it's, it's tough to say, well, is that alone? So, it's tough to say, well, is that alone a measure? But no, I think it's just something to consider or think about, you know, especially when we're tying it into all the other goals, you know? Like I said, you know, the idea of enhancing the facility for the non-motorized users.
For non-motorized people.
Right, right, that's...
I mean, I understand it is a wide intersection, and people are able to evade.
Right.
And have been doing that. I mean, I've done that myself going through that intersection. So, I understand that issue. People have successfully done that in the past. It's hard to put your money on the fact that they're going to do it in the future, and so we're kind of trying to guess it. Are people going to be more aware or more attentive, or are they going to continue to be responsible for their driving? And I don't want to be the one that says people aren't responsible, but... But safety is always something that we have to be careful about. And you're right, if we do have non-motorized traffic there, whether it's people or walking or running or whatever they're doing, the potential with the signalized would help them. But to go back and just kind of refresh, I asked about whether or not we could take, you know, option 1 and put the T-intersection in there and have the MYA egress and crosswalks and stuff. And that's not really very safe for the non-motorized, for people trying to walk across or even cars trying to come out of MYA and go straight into Wire Road, because now they've got uncontrolled traffic coming either way from DW Highway. So, they're definitely concerned there, and I'm not... I guess I'm not real anxious to go with that scenario for those increased lack of safety concerns for people. But anyway, thank you for that addition.
You're welcome.
Nancy, you said just a little while ago that there are other options in terms of pedestrian crossing. What would those options be? Because I understand my concern, I'm leaning from, I don't want lights.
Right.
But I do want egress for the MYA. I do want the 90 degrees, stop signs both places. Set it up so that in the future, if we want lights, all that infrastructure underneath is there, so get it set. My only concern, my major concern is the kids.
Right.
Who are doing the sidewalks and being able to cross. So, what options can you put a signal in for, just for crossing? But then you have to have lights.
Right, as opposed to the full traffic control system. Right, no, understood. So, you know, what we find is with pedestrian safety, particularly pedestrians conflicting with motor vehicles, sorry, let me do that again, is it's really about driver expectation and invisibility, that the drivers are very much... Their awareness is heightened that there is going to be pedestrian activity, and obviously, the presence of a traffic control signal, you know, controls the movements and, you know, can facilitate that conflict as well, you know? It's the best thing to do that. We did mention an option 1, I think, is part of... Alternative 1 is part of that layout, that there are other enhanced crossing systems like the rectangular rapid-flash beacons that you see out there, that, you know, somebody pushes it and it starts to strobe. Those have been proven to be effective, at least, you know, getting the attention of the motorist, and they will yield to the pedestrians. Those are an option. The other is some sort of, you know, a way, and I don't necessarily think I would recommend this, that you find, you know, some sort of means or device to help calm or slow the traffic through that area. So, if you were just to stripe a crosswalk, one thing, we probably, you know, we didn't show it, but if we were talking about putting in a crosswalk without the signal, we wouldn't necessarily recommend it on both sides. You know, I'd have to think about that a little bit, but it gets a little challenging if you have an unsignalized intersection with the crossings on both sides. It can get a little confusing for the pedestrians, actually, and it can get a little, you know, difficult for the motorists too to kind of understand what's going on there. But there are... Those are the types of options that, you know, would be an alternative.
Because I think the sidewalks are... I mean, I want those regardless of the option we're talking about. I think it's a top opportunity that we should definitely take advantage of and have that done. I also had a question about Church Street. I remember in the past, there was an issue with closing Church Street, and I can't remember what it was. Do you, Paul?
Yes, our fire department, when we were closing Church Street, had an issue with closing Church Street because of access.
To?
To the three or four homes on Church Street. Because they can get...
But you can go right around by the cemetery.
But they got... There's not enough turnaround up there for their truck to turn around once to get... They can come in off of Babu's Lake Road, they just can't get out without going the wrong way down through the library. They can't go through a part... The parking lot. You can't go through a parking lot to exit. An ambulance wouldn't have as much problem turning around there, but the truck or ladder truck, they, you know, without breaking the law and going the wrong way down the library to get out, they couldn't get out. And that was the concern that was presented when we closed Church Street. We understand it's a 15% grade. We understand that is well outside the ADA per sidewalk. That's why the sidewalk stopped where it did.
So, that's...
I don't know.
Not addressed here.
It's not addressed here, whether or not, you know, it says they're recommending to close it. The council still has another bite at that apple with the final design, after the final design, or pretty much at the final design. I don't know. I don't want to put the fire chief on the spot. I didn't ask him on this.
But he's here.
But he is here for a different avenue, but that's something that he can look into and get back to the council on.
That's what should happen. We should actually know what it will take to leave it open and to accommodate a sidewalk. I don't know how that's practical.
Without retaining walls and an extra cost. That's what we were always told.
But that's the dilemma that has to be addressed, so we have to figure out how we can do that. Because it's either close it or fix it so we can do, run that sidewalk through, and so...
Yeah. Yeah, because there's no way, if you come in off of Church Street, off of Babu's Lake Road, there's no way to turn... There's no way to put a hammerhead in there. There's no way to turn a truck around that way. Yeah, the chief's like shimmering over there. There's no, you know, I won't say there's no way. There's always a way. It's just, there's private property up there. There isn't enough public road to put it in. If there's cars parked at the adult community center or behind where the old pizza man used to be, it makes it real tight to try to maneuver a truck to get that back out.
It is a difficult area.
But there's something that we need to look at, I guess, and talk about with that. And I think that would be something that we go back to these gentlemen and say, that's one of the options. When you do look at XYZ option 1, leaving Church Street open, how much is that going to be? And B, if, you know, does it make the cost associated with it? And then get the police and fire department, mostly the fire department, to come in and weigh in on closing of Church Street.
All right. I'm going to...
Thank you.
I'm going to read Barbara's real quick. Barbara said she wasn't going to be able to attend this evening, but wanted to give us her thoughts regarding this project. She says, "Regarding Proposals 1 and 3, new access to the MYA is nice to have. I've been there for Saturday games, and the car is clear, the parking lot very quickly. There is no backup. If the property is used for a different purpose in the future, then any changes to the interest can be made at that time based on the needs of the proposed project. Any changes we make now could be a waste of money and might need to be revised based on the future use. So, it would be logical to wait and make those changes based on an actual project, on actual project requirements. A right-turn lane and a left-turn lane is also not needed for current traffic volume. Cars entering and exiting the parking lot currently have very little wait time in making turns. Cars heading north already have the right turn, so a separate lane is not needed. Adding a left-turn lane would only increase traffic congestion in this area and delay cars trying to make the turn. Adding a traffic light at Wire Road would only back up traffic more severely on DW, especially during rush hours when traffic is at its peak volume. It would also be too close to the lights at Babu's Lake Road, the distance being the equivalent of one city block. Try driving north on the DW, starting from Merrimack 360 Plaza... Merrimack... I'm sorry. Merrimack 360 Plaza to Bedford Road at rush hour and experience the traffic issues we currently have. Putting a traffic light here would make it even worse. Instead of a traffic light straight in the corner so that it's closer to 90-degree angle to eliminate the need for drivers to turn 180 degrees to look for oncoming traffic, traveling south on DW. Another solution would be to leave the road as it is and restrict left turn, or no left turn from Wire Road onto DW, and leave the sidewalk as... And leave the existing stop sign in place. Sidewalk has not been completed on the west side, only in front of Lewis Towing, and there is no sidewalk on the east side in this area, as stated in the report. It has been the plan of the town to complete a sidewalk from Merrimack 360 Plaza to Bedford Road on the west side, complete the sidewalk on the west side in this area as part of the bridge project. Sidewalk on the east side is not part of the town plan and is redundant. I'm also against closing Church Street at the DW intersection for safety reasons. Closing the street would leave only one entrance to the street for emergency vehicles. If for some reason the street became blocked or damaged near the cemetery or church, emergency vehicles would not be able to get to the homes. Community center may, or maybe even the church. Instead, look to lessen the grade of the road as it intersects with DW. Another consideration, although the potential funding for this project is an 80/20 split, as we have learned from other recent projects, cost estimates have greatly exceeded the original estimates. So, for a project that estimated, that is estimated to be $1.4 million this month, could very well exceed $2 million or more by the time the project goes out to bid. Limiting those items from the plan that would, that do not work for our town, our traffic patterns are, or are "nice to have," quote-unquote, will save the taxpayers from increases on their property taxes, and yet will still yield the desired results. Thanks so much, Barbara. All right, Andy?
I just want to go down a list of kind of where I'm at and some of my thoughts on this. The recommended option is $1.4 million. I think everybody needs to keep in mind that the town's portion of that is $280,000. So, it's not $1.4 million. If we decide that we're going to pass on this, just know that there's going to be another community somewhere else that gets a better intersection, a safer intersection, and we're going to be out. As one of the things that I asked last session that we had on this, for $280,000, could we build the sidewalks? Because that is a major goal of the town. As Kyle stated, we couldn't even build the sidewalks in this project for $280,000. So, when you think about it holistically, we are getting a lot for our money if we decide to go with the recommended option. I've heard multiple times, turning left from Wire Road is not a problem for me. I can turn left from Wire Road anytime I want. I agree with that. I can go down Wire Road and hang a left on DW Highway, and it's no problem for me. However, I know there's other people that would never even consider taking a left from Wire Road. And so, you know, the statement that, hey, it's not a problem for me, it doesn't mean it's not a problem for other people in the town. And so, there's some people that I know, they get anxiety if they even thought about turning left from Wire Road on DW Highway. So, it is an issue for some people that we should consider. Improvements that this potentially could bring to the MYA property for future options. Again, town's portion is $280,000. What do we get if we went with the recommended option that leaves future options open for us for the MYA property, because now we have a signalized exit coming out of that property? And then, the last thing that comes to my mind is safety. So, we talked about how much, you know, could this potentially make it safer for traffic, make it safer for pedestrians? And then, when you take the fact that Kids Cove and MYA is right there, and according to the data, we're going to slow traffic down, I think the maximum amount was 12 seconds during a period of time through there. If folks can't slow down 12 seconds for improved safety around MYA, I guess I, you know, you're on a different planet than I am. So, those are some of the reasons why, you know, I'm personally, I'm in favor of the recommended option.
Yeah, when I first began to think about this, the first presentation, and a little while after that, the trite phrase, "A solution looking for a problem," came to mind. I've since let that float out of my mind. I've had occasion to use that intersection for most of 50 years. You don't need to know why, but some of you do know why. Frequent flyer over and out into town. And I have to say, it doesn't really matter... I can't recall a time when there was a backup, there was... It works as it is. On the other hand, specifically Mrs. Harrington, and specifically Mr. Disco, chases me to option 3. Basically, because so many years from now, somewhere, that MYA piece isn't going to be only what it is now. And then, of course, the pedestrian versus motorized traffic, not vehicle, motorized, has impact. So, this counselor's saying okay to option 3. Thank you.
The only caveat I want to be able to add on to my concerns, I did mention this the last time. The idea of having so many lights together is really very scary. The only thing that calms me down a little bit is that I live near Exit 11, where Continental comes out, and everyone knows that has been horrendous for years, and we could never get DES to synchronize lights. Well, all of a sudden, they were able to synchronize it. It is 90% better than it ever was. I'm not saying that there's not some people in the queue, but you're not getting anywhere near the congestion. So, that's the only thing that gives me a little bit of confidence in that synchronizing of the lights. If I did not have that experience, I would not buy it. I would not have trusted that. But having experienced that, I do think it's possible. But it's still, I understand the concern with so many lights together. And the only thing that, you know, helps me, calms me down a little bit is that experience.
And that intersection, the Continental Boulevard situation, the traffic is boatloads better, and it has heavier use now. There's a lot of people living in there, and so there's higher traffic impacts, and it's running much more smoothly than ever.
Yeah, you've got the lights right in what used to be DeAngels, it's not anymore, but that goes into the theater or something. Yeah, there's like five sets, well, four sets of lights within a very small area. So, if that has that effect, then I just have a little bit more trust in this situation.
Good point. So, if there's no further discussion, what might the pleasure of the council be?
Where do we need to go with it?
Where do we need to go at this point? What?
You have to give our consultants some direction on which option you'd like them to continue with the final design on, whether it's option 1 or 3, because I hear 2's out, which is the roundabout. And then, if you would like additional information on what the cost might be to try to keep Church Street open with the sidewalk, they would need to work up those costs. Because right now, option 3, if you go with option 3, we'll just use option 3. If you go with option 3, they're recommending the closing of Church Street. If the council wants to see alternative proposals on Church Street, you need to give them that direction so that they can look at those other options. But they need to know which option they need to start preparing the final design for. And then, we'll handle our information with this.
Is it possible that we might get a solution to the dilemma of Church Street with this? I mean, if there could be a reconfiguration somehow, to be able to accommodate what we need, and it's still within the project, that might...
There would. We have to talk to DOT on that and say that the council has asked for alternatives and come up with some kind of costing with it, with them. So, we'd have to put an amendment in with the state, but we could do that. It's not that difficult. It's not that difficult to ask the state for an amendment to include, not, you know, looking at an option not to close Church Street.
I mean, we certainly have a rationale for it.
Yes, we do.
Due to safety.
Due to our safety concerns of our fire department. And those five or six homes up there, I don't even know.
As well as the pedestrian traffic.
Pedestrians walking, yes.
There's a lot of items in it.
So, did I miss the... I thought I saw something in here about the closing of Church Street and having to modify... So, so did I miss the, I, I thought I saw something in here about the closing of Church Street and having to modify that roundabout or the end of the, end of the road there or something like that. Is there anything in there about the effect of closing Church Street and having that street dead end?
There was a, in the appendix, there was a sketch that was made by some of the DPW to do a hammerhead turnaround at the top. And we included that as, and it was from a prior discussion. I'm not sure if it was the Town Center Committee or it was the Town Council. But it was included in a prior meeting years ago. And we included it as a possible option that DPW came up with if it was to close. So that was prior to us looking at the project, so.
And, and one other, thank you. One other question. Paul, you said it would be illegal to go the other way through the library parking lot. What makes it against the law to do that by, by emergency equipment?
It's, it's a one-way coming. They would be going against the one-way traffic and it would be.
Yeah, once, once or twice a year and it's emergency equipment doing it. Is that against the law? Or is it just against the one-way of the parking lot?
Talk to me about going one-way, wrong way on a one-way, please.
And while you're coming up, if you could think about why a vehicle, a truck couldn't make it through the parking lot to get up into that road.
Well, the truck could make it through. It would be a quick, quick and they can get through the library, but you're running just emergency vehicles.
Evening, thank you. Anything that any vehicle does, whether it's an emergency vehicle or a regular motor vehicle that the public drives, we are subject to all of the road regulations. Now, we, we, we do get the ability, if we so choose to and we feel it's safe, we can take our chances and disregard the rules. If someone has made a rule that that's a one-way and if it's private property and it's town property, we'd have to talk to legal to, to see whether if we did go the wrong way and something were to happen, who's going to be found at fault and who's going to take the liability and responsibility at the end of the day. I'm not always in favor of doing something against what the rules say. You're right, there are, will be certain situations that we can do it, but we'd have to put police in place, block off roadways, so we make it as safe as possible and notify the public. We're doing something that is not to the rule. So that's, you know, I would never put apparatus in jeopardy for, you know, going the wrong way. And as far as that area goes up, again, I just moved to town here a year ago, so I will take the time to review the area and see what we can do about Church Street. But, you know, all options, to me, all options should be on the table. We certainly can look at everything before we, you know, make a final decision.
That'd be great, chief. If you, if you could actually physically look at it, that'd be beneficial. Thank you.
And, and is there an option to make it a two-way street? Does it have to be one?
Two-way parking lot?
Well, it comes, see, there was, there was a lot of concern years ago. You used to be able to get out of the library and go right or left onto Babuzak from the library. There was a lot of situations that had occurred with safety of cars whipping around off of DW and the person trying to take a left. So a decision was made to close, make that entrance only coming off of Babuzak Lake Road to the library and then going up and around and using Church Street to exit the library.
So I, I think that strengthens our argument to D O T that we need to look at reconfiguring Church Street due to safety issues.
Well, that's, yeah.
But it still leaves us with the question of whether or not we have any of these options we want to choose and there's.
I think that the options, the decision can be made on the options tonight, the Church Street closure or finding a way that we can accommodate the different issues that that area holds can be, can happen simultaneously. I, I, you know, I think the project, no matter what the ultimate decision is on Church Street, the project can be chosen, the, the option can be chosen tonight.
Church Street is a very small. I'm not saying it's insignificant, but compared to the overhaul entire project, it's a small section of the entire project that they need to start working on. Especially if you go with option three, because there's planning on teeing it, going into the M Y A and things of that sort. So that's a small section of the project that can be looked at with that, whatever option you, you do proceed with, one or three.
Somebody go out on a limb?
So I move to proceed with option three, the recommended option for the proposed safety and capacity improvements for the US Wire Road intersection and corresponding corridor improvements.
Did you want to speak to the further looking into of Church Street? I don't know if you wanted to include that as.
Yeah, we can include that. With instructions for the, the town manager to work with the engineering firm to look at options to reconfigure Church Street and coordinate as necessary with New Hampshire Department of Transportation.
Second.
Motion by Andy, second by Tom. Would you like to speak further in your motion, Andy?
I think we spoke on it.
I think we did a pretty good job. Is there any further discussion?
I just, I, I think that of the three options, from an engineering study perspective, that's the best one to go forward with. I understand all the different arguments, plus and minus, pros and cons. And I guess I'm convinced at this point that if we're going to go forward with any kind of thing, that three is the best option to go forward with.
Great. Thank you, Tom. If there's nothing further, then I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, six zero zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Appreciate the public's input on all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, guys.
All right, I'm going to move on to legislative updates. I don't know if Counsel Selectman, if State Rep Boyd has anything to offer, but in the meantime, I'm going to read what has come in to me. Tab, I was going to get there. I know she's getting ready, but I'm going to read Representative Maureen Mooney's email to me or probably to us. She says, greetings, the Merrimack House delegation has members on the following House standing committees. Committee on Finance, we have somebody, Committee on Science, Technology and Energy, Committee on Resources, Recreation, and I think it's Economic Development, but she says development. Committee on Public Works and Highways and Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. The second thing, she says, the first year of the legislative ban is the state budget year. The process begins with the governor's draft of the operating budget due to be to the House Finance Committee no later than February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Like last term, she's keeping a legislative tracking chart of PFAS-related legislation for the Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals. It is a Google document that she can share if requested at this link, and it's, it's a big link, I won't read it. Respectfully submitted, Representative Maureen Mooney. And Sir William.
So that, that was kind of part of what I was going to talk about was Representatives Rung, Magoo and Healy are on Resources, Recreation and Development, Counsel Murphy, Representative Murphy. Criminal Justice and Public Safety, congratulations, you're going to be busy. I mean that sincerely. Representative Mooney is on Finance. She's also vice chairing Division Three. So she's going to be heavily involved with Health and Human Services. Likewise, she will be busy. And then the WIP, Janine Notters on Science and Science, Technology, Energy with Representative Thomas. And like I announced earlier, I'll be on Public Works and Highways, which is part of the reason why I'm here because there is a bill that is of importance to the town of Merrimack. It is scheduled to be brought to the Public Works and Highway Committee on January twenty-fifth. It is House Bill Twenty. It is naming the bridge at Bedford Road going over Babuzak Brook in the memory of Richard Dickhenge. And Janine Notters, the prime sponsor of the bill, I signed off, I believe Representative Murphy signed off, Bob Healy. Leadership, Speaker Packard, Leader Osborne, Deputy Speaker Smith, three senators, Senator Avada Nash, there's a laundry list of people that have co-sponsored Representative Notters' bill. So it's very exciting that this is going to be coming to my committee to begin the process of, of recognizing obviously an individual that larger than life who still remains iconic for the town of Merrimack. So I wanted to bring that to the council's attention, especially the date. I think it's the, I think it's ten o'clock in the morning. I think it's the first bill that, that my committee will be hearing. So certainly would encourage you to offer testimony or come, come, come in person and, and speak to the committee. Other than that, that's, that's really all, all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Thanks for stopping by this evening.
Have a great weekend. Thanks, everybody. Good to see you all.
Counsel Murphy, State Rep Murphy, you've had some things you wanted to speak to?
I do. Sorry, it's going to take a couple of minutes. Just first, probably a good time just to mention the bills that, that I am sponsoring. I think there's twenty-seven or twenty-eight, but only four of them I'm prime sponsoring. And all of those actually impact Merrimack. One is, it's L S R two oh one, it's relative to lead testing in children. And Merrimack was known to have some elevated lead levels in some of the faucets at our school. So that's one of the bills. Another one, which I've rewritten about six times and OLS has done a number of redrafts to try to ensure some support from, or beg for some support from D H H S. It's L S R two five six, and that will direct the Department of Health and Human Services to develop a health outcomes repository related to per and polyfluorinated alcohol substances. I really would like a health registry, but a registry is sort of a third rail word and creates a lot of opposition that we don't want to. We want to just be able to collect health outcomes data for communities like ours that have PFAS contamination, whether by air or in drinking water. So that's an important one and we'll keep the community informed on social media and stuff, just in case people want to, to write in to support that. A third one is relative to the departments, L S R five nine zero, I don't have a bill number yet. That's relative to D H H S and D E S, data sharing and memorandum of agreement. There, the, there is a statute that requires D H H S and D E S to share data. Much of it, like in terms of PFAS, it's environmental and health because there is a relationship. The data agreement, this, this memorandum of, of agreement, actually, it seems to have expired in July of twenty twenty-two. So this bill will require that there be no lapse in that agreement. We're not telling D H H S or D H H S, D E S what has to be in the agreement, but they have to figure out and guarantee that should we require information that we'd be able to access it, then we don't hear what often happens, a number of months for leadership to review things and to get back to us. So that will eliminate that challenge. And the last one is an L S R six oh five that I actually was a prime sponsor of in twenty eighteen or nineteen when I, I wrote the bill to basically put the, the state of New Hampshire in compliance with federal special education law, which allows children or youth to, who are receiving special ed services to receive those services through their twenty-first year, up to the twenty-second birthday. And COVID hit and why it passed it in the committee, twenty to zero, which is sort of remarkable to, for education to get anything, full agreement. It went on consent, but what happened was COVID hit and this bill, actually the language was removed from it and I don't know, must have been twelve other bills were all added on to my bill. The intent of my bill was removed. My name's still on it and I get credit for it, but I had nothing to do with any of these bills. So fortunately, I spoke to Bill and, and Representative Boyd took this bill and passed it last session. And we've discovered that there are some just housekeeping issues. There were some changes in other parts of the law that have not yet been made. So I'm sponsoring that and as Representative Boyd and Representative Rung are our co-sponsors. So that's just the update on, there's a number of other PFAS bills I'm co-sponsoring as well, but we'll talk about those later. What, this is just what I really wanted to mention. So one of the best parts of my role is, is both as town counselor and a state rep for the Merrimack community is having the opportunity to engage with residents, whether related to issues impacting our community or having the opportunity to participate in events recognizing residents' accomplishments. When young people are involved, it's especially rewarding and enjoyable. So I want to briefly share just two recent events that illustrate this. First, I want to congratulate Eagle Scout Chase Moran, whose Court of Honor ceremony was held last Saturday. Chase's Eagle project was to build a friendship, a buddy bench for students on the playground at Reed's Ferry School. The value and importance of this work was recognized by all in attendance last Saturday, including Reed's Ferry staff, myself, Senator Shannon Shanley and Representative Jean, Janine Notters and Town Counselor Barbara Healy. Like many other Eagle Scouts that have come before him, Chase has made a positive contribution to our community that's both important to recognize and greatly appreciated. So thank you and congratulations to Chase. A second and remarkable, remarkable event that I'd like to acknowledge, and I had the opportunity to deserve to, was, happened today at the State House. A bill was heard today sponsored by Representative Rung and co-sponsored by myself, Representative Boyd and Representative Healy, that had as its genesis a, a desire to address an issue of concern raised by one of our Merrimack High School students. Fourteen-year-old Merrimack High School freshman Matthew Brown had reached out some time ago to Representative Rung to ask about the possibility of submitting a bill that could improve student health outcomes and potentially save the lives of New Hampshire students. Matt worked with Representative Rung to draft legislation, eventually known as H B thirty-five, that would require student IDs for New Hampshire students in grade six through twelve to include the National Eating Disorders hotline phone number. Recognizing that this eating disorders is a major mental health issue facing our youth and that those with bulimia are eight to nine times more likely to die from suicide than the general population, Representative Rung and I testified in support of this bill this afternoon. What made today so extraordinary was not our testimony, but that of Matt Brown. This young man came to the Legislative Office Building with his parents and testified as to the importance of passing this legislation, excuse me, legislation with far more poise and proficiency than many of us in the general court. Matt blew the House Education Committee away with his maturity, his ability to articulate the problem and proposed solution and the ease with which he responded to the committee's questions. I can't tell you the number of lobbyists, committee members and others who came to speak with Matt after the public hearing to congratulate him on his work to bring this legislation forward and present it to the committee for consideration. He did such a phenomenal job, he was approached to consider joining a youth leadership program by one of the stakeholders present. So kudos to Matt, Matt Brown, his parents and to Merrimack High School. You made Merrimack proud. It was, it was phenomenal. I said, this was one of those things that you would love the students and government at the high school to see. So the good news is you can all watch it. It's on YouTube. And so I told him to tell all his friends at school and so Merrimack High School, History Department, Social Studies. It's a great learning tool for our kids to see how they can make a difference. And to see how it's done, it should be a great training video for new reps. So that's it. That's all I wanted to say was, sorry, it took so long, but.
He's an amazing young man. His family's friends with us. And he, two years ago, so he was probably twelve years old, sat in the back with his dad because he wanted to come see one of our meetings. And he's a junkie. He's, he's, yeah.
Remarkable, remarkable.
So no, thanks for all that. That was great.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
You, you mentioned the special ed and age twenty-one in, in your last one you talked about. Is that something that's not a state requirement at this point?
Well, the state law in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen did not reflect the federal law. We were inconsistent with federal law. So I had reached out to Diana Fenton, who's the attorney for the Department of Education and asked, you know, about why we were different than other, other states. This bill actually, again, its genesis was another resident. It was Mr. Bob Bevel, who recognized and said, you know, we actually could get in trouble for not being in compliance with federal law. So I reached out to her. She said, yes, it would actually make my job easier if the state of New Hampshire statute said what the federal law does. And that's what, what brought it forward. What our law said up to that point was that our children were eligible for those special ed services up to the age of twenty-one. It's, it's through the twenty-first year is what technically they should have been eligible according to federal law. It's, it's through the 21st year is what technically they should have been eligible according to federal law. So it's not that we've, uh, some school districts in New Hampshire were letting their kids stay till, you know, through that 21st years, others weren't. So there was no consistency and um, so it actually sort of straightened things out for the SAUs. And so now everybody knows if a student is eligible by law, um, you know, based on their IP and whatever, that they, you know, they can, they can stay um, just up to their 22nd birthday. So.
Okay. I, I, I knew that Merrimack did go up to 21. I didn't realize you were talking about going through 21.
Yes. Yeah. Yep.
And that's what federal law says?
Yes. And because sometimes what would happen is a student might turn 21 in October. And so, you know, the summer's a, a natural transition period. So sometimes students wouldn't come back to school for um, September, even though they, they, you know, they were not even 21. So this would mean that though, that student now would be able to have that whole extra year of school because they wouldn't turn 22 till the, the, the following, you know, September, October.
Thank you for clarifying.
Town manager's report.
I'll, I'll make this quick, interest the time. I just want to let the community know, we have several vacancies throughout town. Please visit our website if you're interested in joining the Town of Merrimack's team. They range from DPW, wastewater, police, fire, all the way, all the whole gamut throughout town. So if you're interested in joining the Town of Merrimack's team, please look on our website with, for all our job openings. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. We have nothing on the consent agenda, no old business. Item one under new business submitted by Chestnut Hill Properties. The council is to consider the acceptance of a section of Captain Bannon Circle between Old Blood Road and the intersection of Madeline Bennett Lane from the intersection of Merrimack Middle School driveway. Also to accept all associated slope and drainage easements within Phase One of the project.
Before Dawn left, uh, she reviewed this um, and was okay with all the meets and downs. Um, I have a copy, we received the copy late today, um, this morning from, uh, for the warranty deed. Um, and I sent that off to our attorneys and our attorney says to me, a sample deed looks fine. No need to separate the drainage easements from it. So we're, if the council would like to accept the road um, from the, basically the middle school, Madeline Bennett Middle School to Captain Bannon and from Captain Bannon, the left to Old Blood Road. It's been approved by our legal counsel and Dawn reviewed it.
Lon?
I was ready to make a motion.
Oh, please.
I move that the town council accept a section of Captain Bennett Circle between Old Blood Road and the intersection of Madeline Bennett Lane from the intersection to the middle school driveway and also to accept all associated slope and drainage easements within Phase One.
Second.
Motion by Lon, seconded by Nancy Murphy.
And allow the manager to sign.
And the usual, give the town manager the authorization to.
Sign any documents necessary.
This is seconded over that? All right, Lon would like to further speak to your motion? Nope. See, any further discussion? Seeing none? Call the question. All those in favor, motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Item number two under new business. Submitted by Matt Casparius, so I'm sure Paul will speak to us if necessary. The council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $675.42 from Boy Scout George Schwartz to the Parks and Recreation Department to be used for future park improvements at Twin Bridge Park pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article Eight, Section 15. This surplus money was from his fundraising efforts that he had raised to complete his Eagle Scout project at Twin Bridge Park.
So moved.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Andy.
I don't really, just again, just thank you for, the Boy Scouts in this town are unbelievable.
Yeah.
And this is another example. So thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six zero zero. Item number three under new business submitted by Chief DeFranzone. Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $2,500 from the Digital Federal Credit Union for the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department to use towards programs and services that make a difference in the community pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article Eight, Section 15. Hey, Chief.
Thank you, council. Uh, yeah, we received the check from um, the credit union and we're more than humbled and graciously willing to accept their donation. We haven't figured out what quite, we want to do with it yet, but um, it's just nice to be recognized and thought of during these times when money is very tight for everybody. So we certainly are, are very thankful that they thought of us during this time of the year.
They're, they're very good, you know, community members, for sure.
Absolutely. They have been. You, you have no idea, you have no plans on how you might use it at this point, or?
Well, we certainly have a needs list and we're trying to prioritize the needs list and how far that, that money will get us. So um, if you want, I certainly can come back to the council and, you know, explain what we're going to do with the funds if you wish, but we're still trying to go through the needs list.
An easy list that would be, that would be programs and services that make a difference in the community as opposed to Band-Aids and, and splints?
Absolutely. Yes. These would be for those things that um, one of the things we're looking at is extra lighting. When we have a fire and we need to investigate it, we don't really have a lot of good exterior lights that we can leave that will last for a period of time while the investigators do their work. So we're looking at that, but those would be multi-use lights that we could use at different uh, other types of calls and those type of things. We're trying to find something that, can we get the biggest bang for the dollar, is really what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Did we have a motion?
Move to accept it.
Sorry, I was on a roll and I just forgot all of a sudden. Not a good sign, is it? Tom, I've made a motion to accept.
Move to accept the donation from uh, DCU to the Fire Department pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and our Charter Article Eight, 15.
Second.
And to authorize the town manager to sign anything necessary.
Second.
And motion by Tom Kinnick, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? It's six zero zero.
Counsel, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Item number four under new business. Council uh, to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 178, taxation, Article Five, optional veterans credit of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article Five. I mean, this is kind of a housekeeping, I guess, we had passed uh, three years ago?
Yes.
Um, the veterans, expanding the veterans' uh, tax credit um, to include all veterans.
The optional, optional tax credit.
Optional tax credit, okay. And uh, and what this is, this change uh, is to allow uh, reservists who are called up on active duty to be able to take advantage of this optional tax credit.
Correct. But it's still active duty.
Yep, they, they'd have to be, go into active, called up, basically.
And the reason why we have to re-adopt the plan is because in 2022, state legislation expanded this optional tax credit to include these individuals. And by including these individuals, all the towns that has adopted the optional tax credit of, we, which we did of $500, have to reassure and re-adopt the plan. If we do not re-adopt the optional tax credit of $500, it reverts back to $50, which is the base in the legislation. So since this is in our ordinances, we have to have the three reads. This is the first read and I went to the attorney and I said, do we have to redo our ordinance because our ordinance actually calls out an RSA and not individual war service credit years? And they said, yes, because of the action that the House and Senate took to pass the law in 2022, we have to go back and re-adopt. And that's why the language in the item itself says, if you read it, number five reads that the town had, the, the, the town has re-adopted the provision of RSA 7228 and dot, dot, dot for our, for the optional veterans' property tax credit to include eligible active duty veterans. And those are, those, those were the changes that were made with the law that we have now included in our ordinance.
So we have to move this to public hearing?
Correct.
So Paul, what, um, your comments just triggered something in my mind. Two years ago, I, I recused myself from the discussion on the item because I had the potential of taking advantage of that tax credit. So I didn't vote on it. Where would automatically go back to $50? Should I step down again, or is it okay to vote on this?
When in doubt, why don't you recuse yourself?
When, when in doubt, I would say recuse. Right now, we do have enough councillors to. For, for majority.
Should I get up and sit in the audience like I'm supposed to, or are we just going to remove this on to the next read?
It all depends what the, what.
No.
At, you passed the gavel.
Just put tape over your mouth.
You, you pass, just say you passed the gavel to.
That's solid, my wife.
Pass the gavel to Nancy and Nancy can control this.
Okay. Would someone like to move this consideration of changes to Chapter 178 to the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Nancy Murphy, seconded by Tom Kinnick. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay, can't, okay, recuse would be two.
Yeah, zero, because I don't vote, so I'm not even.
So it's zero, so it's not even voting, right?
No, but we have to mention that both council.
Counselor.
Hunter and Chairman Rothhouse recuse themselves from this discussion.
That wanted that documented somehow.
Yes, we need to, we need to document that in the minute.
So that has passed with a four, zero, zero.
And it was moved to not, uh.
Moved to a public hearing. Thank you. I'm giving back the chairmanship to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. Job well done. I uh, I'd actually, I'm going to ask the council if they might consider tabling uh, the next agenda item. I'd like to speak to the uh, the, the person who brought forward the agenda item. I'd like to table, I'd like to table the uh, this item.
Because he's not here today.
Yeah, I'd want to have a conversation with him.
Without objection?
Is that?
Well, you need a motion to.
Oh.
Move to a certain date, certain, because you just tabled it.
I think you just.
Tabled, yeah, just. Just tabled.
Move to table agenda item number five, acceptance of donation 3601.
Second.
Good motion by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. So it's five, uh, one, zero, with Tom Kinnick putting in the negative. All right, um, next item on the agenda, the December 15th meeting minutes.
I'd like to move passing of the town council meeting minutes for Thursday, December 15th as presented.
Motion by Nancy, seconded by Lon. Is there any changes, Tom?
I don't know about changes. I wasn't here, so I'm, I'm just querying some of what's going on. Uh, and it says I wasn't here, I was excused. But on page uh, five of 10 at the top, the public hearing for the Bear Christensen Fund is listed as not to exceed 10,000, but then the vote was to exceed 10,000 to go with 13. Is that, um, am I reading the, the, the minutes correctly that?
Yes, what, um, it was brought to our attention that Chris had wanted to raise the amount from. With the agenda item was for 10,000, wanted to raise it to 13 with the breakout, the way it shows.
Okay. In, in line nine, 10, it talks about Counselor Hunter asked why the amount has to be limited to 10, in which Mr. Boland stated that it really should be a fixed amount, but the not to exceed is required per town's attorney. So I don't know if that statement is saying that Mr. Boland said that it had to be 10,000 or it had to be any number you choose, but it should not exceed. And I guess I'm a little confused as to what was going there.
If, if I recall correctly, I inquired, why couldn't we make it not to exceed 50,000 and just be done for the entire year? And I think the response was, the attorneys didn't really care for that and it needed to be a specific amount. I believe that was the conversation.
That's correct.
And the difference between 13 and 10, it did not change. It was a public hearing for, that we listed not to exceed the 10. The extra $3,000, it would, it would pass the sniff test. If somebody wanted to come out and talk about it, they would have talked about it. By adding $3,000 more, it didn't change a person's, we didn't say, you know, and to include a brand-new cruiser.
Didn't.
You know, it, it was, it was just adding extra money to something. And if somebody wanted to come out to talk about it, they would have came out to talk about.
Okay. It just seems like in the past, there's been concern about whether or not the, the, the announced agenda item matched what was voted on, and this is 3,000 off, which is, I agree, not a huge amount and not a big concern. But I just wanted to confirm that, that people were comfortable that we advertised one thing and talked about something else. Passed it. The other question I had was on page nine. In line five, it says, he then stated that their deliberative session will be March 15th. And I don't know who there is. I was wondering if that's ours or the schools or who there is.
What line is this, Tom? I'm sorry.
Five.
So is it ours or? Probably wrote it down.
It's ours.
So he then stated that the town council deliberative session?
The town's deliberative session would be March 15th.
The town's deliberative session. As opposed to there. It's a little more clear.
Deliberative session.
No, perfect.
Just took me a minute to find it.
Change there to town, to that, the town deliberative session.
And the ballot is, yeah, that's accurate.
That, that was all I had questions about.
Good thing you looked there. Found all those things.
Eagle, aye.
Yeah, I'm impressed. Is there uh, any further changes? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the minutes. All those in favor, minutes for December 15th with the comments from Tom. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Up and uh, opposed or abstained? It's uh, five, zero, one with Tom Kinnick abstaining. No comments from the press, comments from the public? Comments from the council? I'm going to just say then, happy birthday to my dad. Today, he's 89 years old.
Bless him.
Still going pretty.
Congratulations.
Very thankful for that, but.
Spent some time with him. He said he was missing you. You should have been at the meeting.
He keeps reminding me I'm supposed to go to the old folks' meetings because I'm an old folk now. Wants me to join him, which I should because uh, I know Counsel Woods is there and.
Is it, oh, is this at the?
At the senior center, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but anyhow, so thanks for the opportunity for me to pass it. My dad thinks.
Seeing no other comments, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Counselor Woods, seconded by Counselor Kinnick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody.